I hear a call on December 11th, 2023, a meeting of the Town and Hanson Planning Board to order at 6:30 PM. I'd also like to announce for all those in attendance that this meeting is being recorded for distribution on Women Hanson Community Access. Playback times and other related information on this recording can be found at WHCA.TV. With that call to order, we have tonight present all Planning Board members as well as the Town Planning Office in full. We have some visitors that are in attendance that have signed in. Thank you for coming tonight. If everybody could silence your cell phones just out of to avoid any issues with the recordings, that would be wonderful. The first item of agenda on our business, welcome back everybody after Thanksgiving break. It's so nice to see everybody back and healthy and hope everybody had a great holiday.
Not enough turkey.
Not enough turkey, not enough turkey. So it's great. And then for the public as well out there in the town, we hope everybody had a wonderful holiday. The first item of business that we have on our agenda this evening, gentlemen, if you find in your packets, it'll be item number one. It's the approval of the November 13th, 2023 Public Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes is made by Mr. Kemer.
Second.
Properly seconded by Mr. Benonado. Is there any discussion in regards to those? Regards to that motion. As always, I'd like to thank the Planning Office for doing a stellar job on the minutes for our meetings. Seeing no questions in regards to the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, and any abstentions. Mr. Ellis is abstaining. The vote will be four zero one. The minutes are approved. Mr. Ellis, for the record, abstains. He was not present at that meeting. We'll get ready for just a few moments. We have a 6:35 public hearing. We'll call that at that time. And in preparation for the public hearing, we will have, it's item two. Oh, sorry. Yeah, item two in your packet. The time having arrived of 6:35, the next order of business on our agenda is the continued public hearing of the MBTA zoning district progress update. Under Mass General Law Chapter 40A, Section 3A of the Zoning Act, the Town of Hanson being a commuter rail community must have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted by right. Town Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've been working along with two members from VHB who have been assigned to us through a grant for Mass Housing to assist us in getting completion and full compliance with the MBTA regulations that must take place before the end of December 2024. So I've been working with Luke Mitchell and Krista Magaha, and I had a meeting with them this past week. And we, I say last week, and they provided some information. And what we have on the screen before is basically a PowerPoint of the slides that they went through. This is not a final, but it's pretty close to it. And these slides will be used as part of presentation to, for the public and for the select board. So MBTA Community Zoning Update. So project overview. MBTA Community Zoning Law was enacted to remove barriers to the development of higher density housing. The purpose of this project is for VHB to review the town's current zoning legislation, define a new multifamily zoning district, prepare graphical support for local outreach, and confirm that the proposed district complies with the state's regulation. So their project timeline was research and review, which is kickoff, meeting and tour, compliance and valuation, preliminary outreach to the HLC. Next would be the consensus building, which is prepare district visuals, assist with local outreach. And then last will be implementation, which is full HLC application, zoning overlay language. We're sort of in the consensus building area right now. So what are the state requirements? Well, Hanson is categorized as a commuter rail community. Hanson is required to create a new multifamily district of 50 acres at a minimum. Hanson is required to increase the multifamily unit capacity by 750 units at a gross density of 15 units per acre. Multifamily shall be permitted as of right with no age restrictions, and the compliance deadline is December 31st, 2024. So the proposed district, the district profile that we're looking to create, it has to be one contiguous district. Well, let me rephrase that. Our district is one contiguous district. It's 74 and a half acres total. It meets the 50 acre minimum. There's six separate parcels that comprise of this zone. A hundred percent of the proposed district is within a half a mile radius of the Hanson MBTA commuter rail. So the T is obviously here. This is the station. This heavier outline here is the proposed district. And it encompasses, as it says, six parcels of the main, the main, the bulk of this district is comprised of two parcels here that are currently mostly forested. There are, there is a house on each one of these parcels. The parcel here to the west that abuts Phillips, Phillips Street is actually owned by the town. And then some parcels close to the Main Street also falls within this zone is the area of the former Ocean Spray site and the site to the south of that. So compliance model input. So zoning input summary. This is information that was put into their Excel spreadsheet model as a way to guide and determine how we're going to sort of zone this. So the minimum lot size would be 30,000 square feet, additional lot square footage per dwelling unit, 30% minimum open space, two parking spaces per dwelling unit, three-story max building height, maximum lot coverage of 10%, and their floor ratio of 2.20. To the right, on the right side, you see there says, you know, restricted by age, no limitations of unit, size of unit, no. Restricted to studio, one bedroom to two bedroom units, no limitation of size of bedrooms, no restriction on the number of occupants, no required commercial active ground floor, no required mixed use of any floor, no inclusionary zoning in district, no inclusionary zoning townwide or citywide, no. Is this a 40-yard district? It is not. So the compliance model results, when a lot of this information was put in, this district does meet the compliance requirements, so it has 750 acres, it's capable of 750 units, it is capable of 15 units for dwelling. It's modeled right now for a capacity of 759 units, and that model density is 16.1 units per acre. And again, the acreage is 74 and a half.
Tom, can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Does that take into account the, or it said, open space as well?
I'm sorry?
The 30% open space?
Yes. Mr. Ellis, you got a question?
Yeah, are we gonna, are we gonna take this and review them and bring them back and go over them, or you want to get everything tonight?
No, this, this is a work in progress. So this is, we're still open for comments and questions and.
Thank you. The three-story building height in regards to fire, are we currently equipped to meet that standard? Three-story building height?
For, as far as the fire department's concerned? I can't give you a definite answer. I would think that they would be, considering that the other, the Egan project that's down there right now is a three-story building. I would think that building obviously has sprinklers and the, any new apartments would also require it. Sort of Dakota Partners, the Phillips Street project also has sprinklers, and that's three stories.
My concern would be, do we have enough?
Fire apparatus?
Yeah, and I don't know if I'm putting the cart before the horse, but do we have enough if there was two emergencies at two different buildings?
That's something that we probably will have to examine. That's probably something that, in all honesty, I have not seen discussed in any of this through any of the language or, or regulation requirements. Fire, like what do you do? Let's say, let's say, there is a community that says, we can't, we do not have enough fire apparatus to, to meet this, you know? Though I think the expectation is, and I'm only speculating, but I think their expectation is these will be built out over time, and not all communities will actually get to these numbers. Again, as you're aware, this is a mandate to create the zone, not to actually create the housing. But I would think that that becoming, let's say there was a real interest in Hanson in creating these buildings, I would think that Hanson would be able to bring that up, you know?
Might be just food for thought. Chief O'Brien would say anything over two stories needs a fire sprinkler system. It might be something like that to assist. So I just figured that's kind of food for thought as we go down. Mr. Ellis?
There's lots of equipment. I think he's got a ladder truck. They used to have a ladder truck to be able to handle four stories. But like you just brought up, sprinkler systems are mandate, especially in condos, if they're over so many units. Even side by side, they're required. Over in Stonebridge, they're all sprinkled, which is, helps a lot. And then it would be able to get you level quicker than because of space and what's down there and what's already built. I think you would save a lot of area by allowing four, four stories.
But before we present this to the select board to move on to the town, we'll probably have input, right? Are we gonna wait for the, are we gonna pass this to the select board and have them get department input, or are we gonna have that before we interrupt the select board?
So, well, the next step would be is, once we sort of say finalize this, then it gets passed along to the state. The common, the state's gonna review it for compliance.
Yeah.
And then we'll move on to say town meeting.
Perfect.
Because to go to town meeting first and then go to the state and say you're not in compliance, it's, it just doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
Can I have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Kemer.
I'm looking at the numbers on this, right? And I'm no genius with numbers, but I don't see how they could possibly install septic systems within the confines of this plan. You know, especially with 16 units per acre, that would require, most of this would require some kind of
Innovative system.
Innovative system, yeah. And I don't know, is the state gonna change the rules to suit these sites or?
I can only, I can only give you, I can only give you some, we'll say feedback or scuttlebutt that I've heard from certain presentations that the state has made regarding these regulations. And communities have asked them, hey, look, so you want these, and let's say we have to, even towns that have sewer, we have to expand our capacity at our sewage, at our sewage treatment plant.
Yeah, sure.
And they're applying to the DEP for expansion of the sewage treatment plant. The DEP is saying no. So they're like, so which is it? Do we have, what's, you know, what's going on here? I'm not a hundred percent sure, and this would only be a personal opinion, I'm not a hundred percent sure that it's one of those, I think it's a good idea, but I'm not sure if it's been a hundred percent thought out, you know? I find it difficult just with the fact that the short amount of time they want you to create all this. You know, we have to be in compliance, full compliance, we'll call it by the end of 2024, and I find that to be a short timeline that they've given towns to really, you know, figure it all out.
The only reason I bring it up though is that, you know, the DEP and these guys and a few other more departments within the state need to get together another discussion about, you know, septic and so forth. I think that's pretty close to the aquifer. I'm not sure if it's within the aquifer zone, but you know, just keep adding on all the resource areas around this area and it's just, you know.
It's difficult.
I don't, I, I don't, those are all valid points, and I don't disagree with you. And I'm not sure if they're all communicating to each other at the state level.
I know, it just seems to me like we're creating a zone that, you know, if somebody come in to try to do anything in that area, they're probably gonna get sent back in because they'll need, you know, all kinds of things to come into compliance, which they almost can't.
I think it's in the zone too, too.
Yeah.
Part of it, part of it.
400 feet around.
Yeah, part of it falls within the zone too, so you need 10,000 square feet per acre.
And what's the penalty for not complying?
So the penalty at the end is if you're, if you're not in compliance, the AG's office has issued a has made, has issued a statement that any town that's not within compliance, not only do you lose the ability to apply for grants, but that the, they will, at least the threat is you as a community will be open to litigation, possibly not only on the state level, but on the federal level for violating the Housing Act and so forth and so on. Now, is the state going to go after every community that maybe doesn't comply? Or if there's a group of communities that say we're not going to do this? I don't know. I guess only time will tell. But that is, that is the state that they're making.
I mean, you know, all the years that I've been looking at this stuff, there's the reason that A Street's never really been developed or improved for the most part is it's all regulatory. It's all, you know, there's no septic system ability, we're close to streams and rivers and zone to aquifers. So even in our own master plan, it kind of points out that that area would be a challenge to develop.
But we're just coming up with potential options.
Right.
Not necessarily, you know, patching the egg.
Well, my fear is that if we approve all this, right, then they come back and, well, you approved it all, so now you have to do something. And even if it's wrong, that would be my fear.
Well, we, the, part of the process is, it's not, any project's gonna go through site plan review, so at least there is control.
Yeah, but they're limiting control.
They are limiting, they are making it as of right, and you, the control you have is site plan review. You can't just shoot it down for, we don't like it. When you shoot it down, it's gonna have to be for specific regulation, you know, specific reasons. So district visuals, existing conditions, land use, zoning, developable area, pedestrian paths of travel, utilities, underutilized sites, proposed district, land use and density diagrams, examples of architecture housing type matching the community character. So you see the ones that say in progress, they were working on those and they're continuing to work on those. So this would be the district that you're in more of a 3D sort of model. So again, the district's 74 and a half acres. At the closest point, the district is approximately 100 feet from the Hanson commuter rail. It has an average ridership of 70 and features 428 parking spaces. The proposed district includes 17.6 acres of wetland. So for a reference, this is the current buildings going up, 969 and 999 Main Street. You see the wetland here is shaded with a 25-foot buffer, and then these are 10-foot contours.
Who made that drawing? That's great.
That was through VHB. Their, one of their staff members has created these, these visuals. And I think the, I think you will find that they, they get better as we go along.
I'm trying to speak at a good time.
Can I ask you a question, Joe?
Yeah, absolutely.
Slide that you just showed, you don't have to bring it back up, but it showed the 25-foot buffer zone. So does that mean that this zone won't have to comply with the, with the local wetland's bylaw, which is 50 and 100?
That's the impression I get.
Okay.
So this is a land use slide, as you can see, it's color coordinated. And so we have, the proposed district includes the following land uses. So we have four units that are single family, just over 96,000 square feet of industrial. Industrial businesses that include the top shop cabinet making, South Shore Industries gun shop, Gray Muse Tattoo Shop, the King's Ransom Antique and Consignment. Now, some of those businesses, we know that that building along Main Street is for sale, but obviously those businesses, so those businesses may at some point not be there. But, so this is the industrial areas, and again, this is the, this zone itself. And over here is, is the Dakota Partners Phillips Street project. So land uses surrounding the proposed district, so you have the T Stop Market, Spiro's, Dunk Donuts, some office space, Cranberry Square Commercial Building, Buddha's Bounty Art Gallery, Thompson Waste Removal in Attic Fanatic. New Mixed Use Development Station Landing, which is currently under construction, 965 999 Main Street, which will include two three-story buildings. Building one is three first floor commercial units, 14 one-bedroom units and 12 two-bedroom units. Building number two will be three first floor commercial units, 10 one-bedroom units, three one-plus bedroom units and 10 two-bedroom units. And that obviously is these two buildings here. So this is an overlay of the current zoning. We have a residence double A zone, residence B, business, commercial, industrial, and our flexible overlay district. One thing where, when I was speaking with VHB and they were gonna run some numbers, it was the potential of potentially including this building here, this lot here, and potentially including these properties here as part of the zone. Because you can't, it's, it's not just vacant land. You can also, you know, can convert existing buildings to something else. Let's say you had a single and you want to convert it to a two-family, a two to a three.
How many acres is that empty lot next to a parking lot right now, next to Key Stop?
I don't know off the top of my head. I do know that the, this, these two are being sold, are, I say, are up for sale. And then you have the parking lot next door. I'm not sure if the parking lot, which is owned by the same person on the south side of Vane Street, I'm not sure if that's part of the for sale or if that's being held back. So this slide shows what's, they consider developable area, which would total to about just over 47 acres, taking into account the resource areas. And of course, this all, all this information is based on GIS, so this, you know, none of these resource areas are based on on-the-ground delineations. This slide will, shows you the pedestrian paths of travel. So Main Street currently features a sidewalk along its northern edge. There are several trails in the area connecting different land uses. So mixed use compliance requirements, there's what's called mixed use sub-districts. If all standards are met and offset of the required minimum, unit capacity can be allowed for small mixed sub-areas. The district sub-area within the overall district with that reasonably justifies and allows for ground floor retail. The offset is capped at 25% of the total required minimum in the capacity. The number of units in a mixed use district can exceed 25%, however, the excess units will not be counted towards overall compliance. We're going for a 10% for ease at this particular time. So eligible locations for mandatory mixed use district to be eligible, the district must meet the following standards. The district is eligible, location where existing village style or downtown development is essential. There are no age restrictions or limits on unit size, number of bedrooms, bedroom size. Mixed use development in the district is allowed as of right. The requirement for non-residential uses is limited to ground floor of buildings. The requirement for non-residential uses does not preclude a minimum of three residential dwellings per unit. Lot, dwelling units per lot. Requirement for non-residential uses allow a broad mix of non-residential uses as of right in keeping with the nature of the area. There are no minimum parking requirements associated with the non-residential uses allowed. The, the state has now, the MBTA zoning originally was gonna be all residential, but now they're allowing for a mixed use component, which we sort of have down in that area. But again.
So can I just have a quick question on that last item on the last page, it was just that there is no minimum parking requirement facility with the number of, which is allowed as of right. So is that saying that the two parking spaces per unit is invalid?
I don't think it's invalid. I think it's just as you look at, you know, are you just doing all residential or are you gonna make it a mixed use? If it becomes a mixed use, then I think that's where that's gonna apply. If it's not a mixed use, then the two is, the two is gonna stay. So the next, what's the next step? So finalize an overlay, district requirements and compliance model checklist, compile a list of recent projects completed with state funding, compile a list of preceding projects, finalize zoning language, submit pre and final applications for review. We don't have to go over this page by page, but.
Yeah, the draft zoning.
Yeah. So the draft zoning was sent to you as in your packet. And so what is highlighted in yellow is information that was I input. The rest of it is well called, and I'll use the term boilerplate information that was prepared by the Commonwealth. The areas that you see or the lines that you see identified in red are areas that I had highlighted for myself. I have questions that I, I need more information on and clarification. So what you could do is, when you have a spare moment, if you, if the board could read through these, take a look at those, please feel free to comment or make any recommendations that you see, and we can work on these together. And for the next meeting in January, maybe we can start going over these. I'm also attempting to have one or two of the members that I'm working with from VHB to attend
Perfect.
the meeting in January. It's not included in the grant funding, but I think that unless, unless they're not crazy expensive, I think there's some money in our budget for professional
Consultation.
Consultation, we, we could cover their, coming to the meeting and either here or via Zoom, and they could answer any additional questions, because they have a lot more experience doing these. So that's what I have on that update. Uh, so that's what I have on that update.
Tony, if you could bring up the slide again. Same thing, not trying to put the cart before the horse. If you go to the slide that you have where you showed pedestrian egress. That's another thing, again, not trying to put the cart before the horse, but there should be some discussion at some point, I think, in regards to the back lot of the Oshin Street area, where the current egress is into that lot. If that was to be developed, this one way in, one way out, and and you've got a congested intersection with the MBTA train there. Site lines from different areas is is really poor. So I didn't know if there was other creative ways to get up and over pedestrian bridge or something, you know, I'm just thinking outside the box. And I'd like to I'd like to make sure that that's up there as well because that I think that's a major concern. If that was to be pedestrian areas. Tony, again, we create the zoning, but I just think it's a, I personally think it's a topic. The uh board members, anybody else have a call?
I I we're creating the zone and we're creating the zoning, but I w- I wanna have so I wanna have this as tight as possible.
Sure, yeah.
I don't I don't want it to be, I I'd like to try and remove as much ambiguity as possible.
Like almost like if that's on the table to be developed? A passageway bridge needs to be looked at or some some creative way to create a second.
Yeah, some kind of safety, yeah. I I would, yeah.
Absolutely.
I
Hundred percent, yeah.
I would like to at some point uh look at creating a quiet zone for Hanson. And especially down in this area, but a quiet zone means that when the train is going through town is not they're not laying on the horn, or at least they're not supposed to. But one of the things that when you're gonna create a quiet zone, you have to make improvements at these crossings. And so you have to find ways to make it so that, you know, the specific ways to make this a much safer crossing so that a person's gonna know that the train's coming by. Though I think, well, I I think most people know when the train's coming. Cause you can you can feel it before you, you know, but.
So the other thing, can I?
Any other questions or comments on the board?
Yeah, just Mr. Kevin, to your point, uh, in that area, if you go through there after the train leaves, right? There's this mayhem coming out of the power line and, you know, so all this traffic patterns that are in there, this is all gonna happen, needs to be looked at because, you know, it's already a mess. You know, if you start adding more, and we get those two units coming online further down on Main Street. And, you know, you talk, I I think there's what, maybe seventy-five units with two people each at least. So, I mean, the traffic is already going to be impacted.
Lighting or audiovisual crossings? You know, it might be, we might be able to, if you had an opportunity to encompass some of that with this. See how we're gonna be applicable to the zoning requirement. Maybe we'll get a grant for, you know, proper crossing, something like that.
Yeah, there are there are grants for, when you when you apply for a quiet zone, I believe it's it's uh valid for two years. So there are, there is
Okay.
there is programs out there. It's a particular program. It's not like you just come up and say, well, I wanna make a quiet zone. There is a program that you apply for.
Okay.
And.
Any other questions, comments, just us?
I just got a few things as I I looked at what you had sent out. And um I I think that you might want a regulation, this is goes on to what you have there for the buildings. Off-street parking for cars and bicycles and uh to be stored away from the main buildings because they're all electrified now and they're having a problem with the with bringing uh bicycles into hallways and starting fires and so on.
That's what it is, you know, Philip Street, actually.
Yeah, I mean, this might not be what you have to do right now, but this is some of the things I saw. And um
Requiring requiring exterior storage?
Right. Can't be open.
To your point, yeah.
You know, even automobiles are in the same situation now. So if you had garages, they'd have to be separated somehow. And probably sprinkle, but I don't think you can sprinkle them if you no heat in the buildings. Now, it might be difficult. And and you got the uh reducing greenhouse gases. Um, I think it was, yeah. That you can't reduce the requirements for green. Right now, they can't get enough material. So I would think that maybe you want to put something in there if unavailable. You know, if they start building these things, like Boston, it starts the green too because they can't get enough material to make these buildings green, as much as I might run into just bringing it up. I don't know if you wanna put something in there if it's just available. And uh it uh it you got in there that it's the uh that the planning board is in charge of this and also the select board. But it's not clear as to how that happens. Like the planning board will come up with the rules and regulations and then pass it through the approval of the select board, let's say. It almost looks like a joint thing.
For a site plan review?
Yeah. You know, for this review of everything down there, and the wording that you have there, it just says final plan by the planning board and also the select board.
Could you do me a favor and could you make those notes on a copy of the zoning bylaw that I sent you?
Yeah.
And and
Yeah.
and write on the pages that they were on? And then that way we can just make a copy of it.
Sure. Do I get a secretary for that?
As a matter of fact, that might that might be the easiest thing to do if each one of you has comments. The copies that you have.
Just write them right on.
Write them on those comments and then at the next meeting can turn them into us and we can, you know.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the only thing I didn't really understand was that you have in there uh a fee in lieu of, and it's up to four hundred thousand dollars. What is that? And it goes to the housing or something?
I'll have to double-check it, go through that. Yeah.
I don't know if it if it had to get out of building buildings or I'm not sure what it meant on that.
I'll have to look into it.
Did you want to insert a name on the check?
Well, not mine.
Middle initial P? I see it, yeah. Item five on uh section H. Okay, fee in lieu of.
And so I just want for quick clarification, are are we saying that um whenever these things come about, like one of these projects were to get built, it would be jointly decided by the planning board and the selectman? Because if you think about it, that's that's like herding cats. None of those people have any, I don't I don't think there's anyone on that board that's ever sat on a land use board. So um
What pages?
We have that blackboard in there as well. Yeah, who who ultimately makes the decision? Is it the selectman or the planning board? Because we're elected uh to, you know, take care of all these regulations. Now, you have the selectman in there to muddy the water even more. I mean, that's ten people that you have to get to come to a decision on one thing. We have enough trouble with five, never mind.
I saw everything that had the planning board was the site site plan review. Where did you where did you see that select board?
Oh, somebody just mentioned it, yeah.
Special granting authority.
Special granting authority.
Include include the select.
Oh, I think I highlighted it for that, just for that reason, was to bring it up to your bring it to your attention that, you know, special permit granting authority.
There's gotta be some words in between. I think that's the the final.
No, I'm thinking that maybe we could just make it the planning board.
Right, the final the final decision by the planning board will be brought to the select board for whatever. Great points all around.
Like I said, these aren't, these are, these are, this was a template, so we can we can adjust these to.
You you don't wanna eliminate them, you just because like what you were saying, there's too many of them and they have no clue.
It's gotta go to them for review before town meeting anyways.
Right. But the final state that.
Review.
So one more quick point on that. The special permit granting authority as as it is now, uh Hanson's one of the few communities where the special permit granting authority is the zoning board of appeals. Most of them is the planning board. So if we institute this plan, we need to change the fact that the special permit granting authority is the zoning board and not us.
No.
Yes, we do.
It specifically says planning board.
And but it also says or and or zoning administrators as they designate by the zoning for the issuance of special.
Well, they said highlighted.
Yeah.
That wouldn't include the zoning administration designated as zoning.
Mr. Kevin's talking about a general practice in Hanson.
Well, yeah, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, special permit granting authority is the CBA. We have a destiny as the ZBA.
Yeah, but what you're what you're going through now is is you label it, it's like condominiums. The ZBA has the con- uh the condominium buildings and we have the roadway.
Yeah, I know. But my my point is though is, you know, you're saying uh site plan review authority is uh item twenty, but item twenty-one is special permit granting authority. So all of these projects, if they get built, right, will not be able to get built uh under the hand, you know, the subdivision rules. They would have to be done the special grant permit granting authority, which in this town is the zoning board of appeal. So um none of this makes any sense because until that special permit granting authority situation is uh changed or rectified or modified, uh, the planning board would have absolutely no say in anything that happens in those zones.
Yeah, we'd have to have that discussion with uh the site board prior.
Yeah, well, they're almost on on item twenty, line twenty, the Hanson Plan Board responsible for site plan review and not only the review, but the installations and everything else.
That it doesn't stop there.
Right.
I mean, you set the to item twenty-one, uh, you know, so plant's item twenty. Because that's the way it's done in this town. You can see that would how it would get interpreted, especially by a zoning board of appeal.
Yeah, we could omit that.
Yeah, so uh just some wording changes there, sure.
So that's why I want
Yeah.
five sets of, you know, ten eyes on it.
Yep.
Plus mine and this is why, you know.
Do remember that where where it says uh board of appeals, plan board or zoning administrations and so on, just.
Yeah, we'll make those edits. We'll 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 make these like draft draft edits of this. I present that in January. Did you have any else in your notes?
Yeah, just that four four hundred thousand dollars of in lieu of fee.
Again, this is a boilerplate, so uh now we start going through and fine-tuning.
Electric bicycles, I said that. So put put your notes in in the uh this rough draft and the general will be able to sit and edit all that.
You want me to do all?
You got the notes. Any other comments from the board? Any, this is a public hearing, any comments from the public? Sorry, I have a little glasses back on. Wonderful. With that, we'll uh continue our public, uh, I'm gonna tell you a motion to continue our public hearing.
We'll move.
Questions been made and seconded properly made for Mr. Kevin, seconded by Mr. Cohen in regards to continuing the public hearing, thank you. Continue the public hearing until uh tentatively January eighth. Any questions in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, 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 opposed. So that will be continued till until January eighth. I'm suspecting that most of the folks that are in the audience are uh for master plan.
Yes.
I'll take a motion to take the agenda out of order.
So move.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
Seconded, properly made and seconded. Any questions in regards to that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, we are unanimous. We're gonna take the agenda out of order. We're gonna go right into uh master plan update. Out of respect for those that are here, so we can discuss this and if you wanna stay, so they can stay, but if you wanna leave, we can head out. Uh, so master plan update, provide update to the board and the steering committee on Old Colony Planning Council's progress. Sound thing?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So.
We're gonna go to item five in the packet.
The master plan, um, I asked O- O- Colony Planning Council to provide me with an update with progress report. And I will I will be meeting with the uh, it's an interview with Old Colony Planning Council on the eighteenth uh of December. And so what has been completed is the Old Colony Planning Council have begun Yeah, have begun uh reading uh previous planning documents. Uh, OCPC has met with the following boards and departments, the CPC, the Conservation Agent, the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, the Highway Department Head, the Library Director, and the COA Director. They're meeting with them on January eleventh. Uh, OCPC staff have published and continue to update a website for the master plan, which is up and running along with the survey. They've published the public survey.
What's the website address, Tony? You know?
Um, you know, give me a second. I'll have to find it for you. Uh, it's on our there's actually a connection on our webpage.
Not right on the side of Hanson's on the planning board department section or the main page?
I think it's on the main page, but let me just pull that up real quick.
Oh, right there, master plan.
Yep, here you go.
Right there. So under easy access for the public, we're hearing in a minute. Right on the main, Tom, it's a webpage. There's a link to under easy access for the master plan.
Yep, and so it'll it'll bring you right to the Old Colony Planning Council's uh webpage. Provide information regarding the master plan, who the contacts are, upcoming events, uh, access to the public survey. Information about the workshop that was uh done last uh last month. Um, along with the slides that were presented. So the public can access it through, as you said, our web main webpage. Uh, anyone on the board who hasn't taken the survey, I recommend that you take the survey. Uh, and that includes, you know, any members of the public or if you know any members of the public.
Well, that does bring up a good question. I mean, is there gonna be some kind of uh public outreach, uh notifying people of the survey?
I think they should.
I'm going to. Too, or is it a big secret?
I'm going to be, this is gonna be going out, our IT uh assistant is in charge of the social media. And so now that this is up and running, I've been waiting for the public survey button basically to start working. And so now, now that it's up and running, I will have uh I will put it out on the all the social media uh sites.
We're gonna have, we I think we're required to have two public hearings with OCPC here at present.
And can we also ask that the selectmen uh start uh announcing this at meetings regularly? So that um anyone watching those meetings, you be aware that the survey. And can I ask one more question?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, like, uh, we're a steering committee, right? So um who do we talk to about steering things? Like, you know, who's the point person that we should be talking to, like if we as a group, right?
Have questions?
Yeah, questions or.
If you have questions, comments, you wanna see something happen, I'd say get in touch with me and and then I could pass them along to Old Colony Planning Council because we're sort of all working together as a group.
Megan?
Uh, Riannon.
Riannon, thank you.
So realistically, what you're saying is you're gonna be the point person.
Yeah, I guess you could say that realistically I'm the point person because my name is up on the website, so. Uh, so what's ongoing and up next. So various OCPC staff are beginning to draft drafting of the chapters of the master plan. Uh, the staff continue to look for the public engagement opportunities. More department heads and boards will be interviewed. The steering committee will need to meet several times between January and June. So they will let me know and I will pass that information along to all the members of the steering committee. Um, I would think that they most of those meetings will probably be happening here. Uh, but if that, they'll be happening here, whether it's with the planning board or whether it's just um some other evening or some daytime. Uh, Old Colony Planning Council staff are preparing for a second public meeting, which will more than likely happen here with the planning board, possibly January or February.
I do have one more question.
Yeah.
And I'll stop for a while. Um, all all of these, it's saying that, you know, um, well, it sounds like OCPC is gonna be telling us when they'd like us to meet. Right? But um I think like most of the people on this steering committee are uh on some board or committee with uh commitments for certain nights of the week and things like that. So uh we have to figure out a way to coordinate uh between OCPC and us. Now, I know there's some people here, including myself, that, you know, if you were to say, let's do this at two in the afternoon or something like that, then I wouldn't be able to make it.
Right, and I'm not saying that's what they're gonna, that I'm not saying that's what they're going to do. I I'll if they ask for a a meeting, I'd like to try and set it up during a planning board meeting. Makes it as easy because then everyone can attend.
Yeah, well, that's the plan.
And and we'll set and we'll set time, we'll set time on the agenda for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I know a lot of these groups. Because I know a lot of these groups, you know, uh, they work during the day from, you know, nine to five, so they like to meet at two, or, you know, so it's not gonna work for us.
So, uh, that is the progress report, uh, that I wanted everyone to be aware of, and, uh, we've created a contact, a contact list of all the members, just an official contact list. So that's the update for the, uh, for the master plan.
Great, thanks, Tony, uh, we have, we have the full steering committee, any comments from the steering committee? Any questions, concerns?
Yeah, I mean, if you have anything that, I'm, I'm, the master plan is also on the website, I mean, it's, it's long, but, but if you. Yeah, it's dense, but if you, you know, if you want, you know, if you read through it, uh, and you see things that, you know, you might have questions on, or say, gee, that's a good idea, or I'd like to see, you know, please feel free to, you know, come up with comments or questions, and, uh, so we can, for discussion. And that's all I have on the, uh, master plan.
Great. We're gonna go back up to the top of the appointments, we have six forty-five, we're moved late, uh, George on the plans, Meadow Brook Farms, Residence Subdivision, Zero County Road Assessment, map seventy-four, block zero, lot seven-eight, applicant Ellis Building and Development, representative Morrison Terry, and just for the record, no relation to Mr. Ellis, afterword. Right here, town plan.
So the, uh, applicant, their engineer couldn't be here this evening, but they have filed the certificate of action at the registry of deeds.
Right.
Um, so that's on file, they have also filed their covenant and recorded it. In the covenant, it refers to the book and page for the certificate of action, so those conditions, so there are references. And they've also added that information to each sheet on the plan. So I looked through the plans, and under the general notes, note seventeen lists the planning board's certificate of action where it was recorded, and also the covenant was recorded, and so note seventeen and eighteen, uh, are on each sheet.
The record turn, we're past the twenty-day, uh, appeal?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The, uh, that took place last, no, and they took place in November, I believe it was the thirteenth of November was the twenty-day appeal period when it was over.
I think previous meetings, there were questions about the board in regards to the type of covenant?
Well, the covenant is the standard G, G-one form that the, the town has, I think there may have been, was the case of the bond.
God, I'm sorry, yeah, thanks for the correction, it was the bond.
So the bond will, the bond usually comes up is once the utilities and infrastructure have been in place, and the applicant will pursue lot release, at that time, we will ask, um, our consultant to prepare a bond number based on, uh.
Question.
Actual numbers, plus I believe it's twenty percent inflation.
Just wanna make sure that that's up on the front of the conversations. So for the board members to look, you'll see that everything that was required under special petitions, it's recorded in the covenant, uh. All the updates, we added two things right there, the M those are in, that's the new item, was it L or N?
I believe it was.
The M. That's the leak in regards to shut-off valves. Any of the board members have any comments in regards to the certificate of action? Seeing none, I'm intending to motion to, uh, approve first amendment to the covenant. So move. Motion's made?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, any, any questions in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of endorsement of the plans, Meadow Brook Farms, Residential Subdivision, and, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimous, uh, and you have everything here?
Yes.
Is it okay at the end of the meeting that I, I sign this?
Yes.
That is established, five, zero. Uh, improvement to private ways, applicant Bob Goslin, K and G Development Corporation seeks a positive determination for completed work on roller coaster road in conjunction with proposed construction activity, activity one twenty, roller coaster road assessment map, lot seventy, uh, lot thirty-eight of seventy-nine. Town plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so. So if you remember, uh, what is, it's known as one twenty roller coaster road, this was an improvement to private way.
Yes.
Um, the original. The original applicant was a Michael Curtin. The, uh, original applicant was Michael Curtin.
Yes.
And Mr. Curtin received an approved, an approval by the board for an improvement to private way, and what that was, was the drainage was gonna be placed on this lot to prevent any runoff from entering the road.
Correct.
Uh, because Mr. Curtin only controlled one half of the road, and there was opposition from the other owners along that road for any improvements within the way. That being said, the drainage systems have been installed, and this is an ASBIL, uh, regarding, uh, depicting the, those drainage systems, and there has been a request made by Grady Engineering, uh, that the board issue a positive determination so that they may obtain a building permit. Now, one thing I think you're gonna notice is that the photograph on this plan, you're gonna see that that house is up, but it is not completed, it is empty. And when I say empty, and as in, it's, the shell is up.
Yes, it's unoccupied, right?
Right, the shell is up. What it, what, when, when Mr. Curtin came in, uh, there was the issue of, uh, we spoke with Mr. Curtin and made him aware that, with the, through the building inspector as well, give you a foundation permit, put the foundation in, he put the drainage at the same time, does it make sense to put drainage in and then go back and do the foundation? So you can do that all at the same time, come back before the planning board, get the positive determination, and then we'll pass that along to the building inspector, who can then give you a permit to put wood on the.
Foundation.
Foundation. I'm not sure what, if there was a lack of communication maybe between Mr. Curtin, Mr. Goslin, whatever, but this is where we're at, and I reached out and sent a letter to Mr. Goslin saying, hey, you need to come in and give us the request, the ASBIL, and, and meet all the conditions, and give us the ASBIL plan and the request, because technically, that's the procedure. And he did, and, uh, it's a little after the fact, but there's, the house is not completed, and so he's looking for a positive, uh, determination, and we'll pass that along to the building inspector's office.
So I, I have a question, you know, like, that house is up, right?
Mm-hmm.
So all of the, um, you know, stormwater management stuff, you're saying is not complete at this point?
No, it is.
No, it is?
Yes.
Was it completed before the house went up?
It was completed before the frame went up, yeah.
Because I mean, you know, it's kinda like you say, the cat before the horse, I mean, how do we send a strong message to these people that this is not outdone, you know, that would be my only, you know? I mean, we're gonna sit here, we're gonna approve this whole thing, and at the same token, these guys have jumped the gun, and it just seems like, you know, if we allow this type of behavior to continue without some kind of, um, I don't know, slapping a wrist or something, I don't know. Just might do something, I guess.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, uh, I'm not sure what.
Also, could be internal in the town hall, we've gotta tighten up zoning inspection.
And, you know, people are pretty much building houses, and technically, you cut that up without approval.
Right.
You know, where's the building inspected, is the, right, um, you know?
Uh, so the. The one thing they have done as well is part of, is they've created these stormwater manager operations and, uh, inspection agreement, which I believe.
Let me pad that.
Yeah.
It was in there?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, what's, if the board approves this, then I will have the town administrator endorse it, and then the applicant can record it. Uh, also, this was the letter from Grady Consultants requesting the, uh, positive determination.
And can I ask one more question?
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, so we have this document, Tony, you know, saying that, uh, they have a, a management plan, right? Uh, who or whom in the town is responsible for making sure that the management plan is executed? And I ask that because this document is actually meaningless, because we know that, um, you know, the highway surveyor is not gonna go down here because it's a private road, right? So, um, he's not gonna care what happens with that stormwater management structure. So, um, how do we assure that going forward that someone's actually going to look in the hole, so to speak, to make sure all is well?
It's a, it's actually in there, in this drainage document.
Oh, it is?
Yes, so, um.
After we endorse it, the town administrator is gonna endorse it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we could, we could go, it's four pages, you know, uh, but it's, the onsite stormwater manager facility shall be constructed by the landowner, its successors are assigned, uh. Identified and plans reviewed and approved by the Hanson, they have DPW, the landowner, its successors and assigned shall actually maintain the stormwater manager facilities to the maintenance schedule described in exhibit A.
Right, so.
Tony, who typed this document?
Yeah, oh, oh, item one, public works, we don't have a public.
This was, this was typed up by their attorney.
Right. It's that guy.
Well, it's that, but it says here that the. You have the landowner's successor assigned, shall inspect stormwater manager facility, and shall submit an annual report documenting the inspection and maintenance of the stormwater management system as certified by a registered professional engineer or other qualified stormwater professional.
Yeah, they got, uh, 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 that needs to say, right, so it's gonna say, how do we?
Okay.
You know, we don't have a DPW.
Yeah.
And plus, again, so my, my question is, you know, let's say you make it the town administrator, you're gonna tell me that on a yearly basis, the town administrator is gonna make sure that this happens to the highway department, it, it just.
No, no, I, I don't know if you've had opportunity to read the whole thing.
All right, okay.
I, I would, I would recommend it, um, and then if you have any questions and comments, then we could address it at the next meeting.
Yeah.
But they do, they do talk about giving the town, base, I'm gonna paraphrase, that if there's an issue, the town has the ability to go out there and fix it and clean it, and it's not no expense to the town, and that actually the person owning the house is, has to pay the town to do it, um, so.
Well, with the, with the amendments that we have right now, uh, I'm intending to motion to postpone it until January, uh, to be able to allow the town planner to get back with council to have that edited, to make sure it reflects the proper wording as far as the town Hanson departments.
So move.
Questions been made by Mr. Benano, Benano, seconded by Mr. Kevin?
Yes.
Any questions in regards to that?
Yes, I do, I'd also like, I'd also like to make sure that, uh, there is like, an internal plan of the town, uh, to make sure, like, you know, we have these types of agreements all over the town, and I bet you if you just threw it all in a hat and pulled one out, uh, you'd be like, when's the last time anybody's looked at any of this stuff, and, and nobody's looking at any of this stuff, especially on private roads, because, you know, the highway surveyor is not inclined to go, to go down to private roads because they're not public, so now you've got the town administrator, who is she going to, uh, say, you need to go down and, and take a look and see whether this thing's been maintained or not, because she can't ask the highway surveyor, so who is she gonna ask? So I think this document needs to be written in a way that would, it would clearly understand not only what their expectations are, but what's the town's expectations to make sure that this document is actually executable. I, I just see it, I don't see anybody, the, the, you know, we're assuming that the town administrator's gonna put it on her calendar on a yearly basis, she's gonna ask herself, and given her busy schedule, and if it comes up around the time of town meeting, this is never gonna happen by the town administrator, and I just wanna point that out.
So request to, this is Benano to rescind that motion? Mr. Benano has rescinded that motion, I'm intending to motion to request, uh, to postpone till January eighth. Uh, the wording in the documentation probably reflect the right departments, mainly being Hanson Highway Department, not DPW, with the inclusion of an enforcement schedule, endorsement and enforcement schedule.
Inspection.
An inspection schedule, as Mr. Kim was pointing out.
Mm-hmm.
So, motion's been made?
No, I'll second that.
Properly seconded, any special regards to that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, five, zero, Tony, so please make sure that they get those edits and amendments, and we'll put that on for endorsement on January eighth.
Uh, who made the motion, Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Benano has seconded by Mr. Kevin. That's our next meeting, uh, attended, yeah, attended January. Have a good, have a good evening, Mr. Grant. Moving on, we have a continued discussion for investigation of possible extension of existing codes, business zoning and the flexible overlay. Town plan.
So last time we had, uh, spoke about this, uh, I think the board was sort of, let's say, thinking about it, mulling it over, had concerns, questions, uh, thoughts. And so I guess we just, at this point, is more as, if you've had any further thoughts on it, any feedback that we could have for the record, and then, uh. Just your thoughts, if anyone's putting it in writing, or just if you wanna put it here on audio, and then we can, you know, play it back.
Tony, if you go down on Route fifty-eight, and you come up from the Halifax Town Line, there's a very small, very small, uh, business district there, from that point, uh, on the northern side, basically at the intersection of Bridge Street and, uh, Mon Ponson, from that point north to South Street, there is actually, from that intersection down to that tip of that business area, there's actually eight businesses that are there. So, I kind of, I'm, I'm looking at it as, you know, is there any, you know, putting it out there for discussion? With that many businesses along that, along that Route fifty-eight corridor, that, and as we can see here, not, it's not business zone.
So how does that, yeah, so how does that happen?
How does that, yeah, right, that was my point, how do we have, and, and, uh, don't get me wrong, some of the businesses are, are not for profit, profit organizations, uh, but, uh, you know, how, how would you, how would we have had that in the town? Where we would have a business that would be run, um, and not in a business zone?
Uh, is it?
What happened was, years ago, that whole group was all, um, designated as business.
Okay, so.
They come all the way up to the lights.
Okay.
Uh, in, and the one at the corner of Union Street and, uh, Mon Ponson Street going up to the lights was designated for, um, Brockton Public Market.
Oh, okay.
Where Shaw's is now, was supposed to be down there, and so they, they made that whole district, the people that were in charge of it. Zoning the area down for business down there, so what happened was, somebody bought the land, I don't remember who it was, and they decided, asked the town to reduce that back to residential, because it was nobody that wanted the, the, um, Shaw's like, building down there, they wanted it up in another area, so they changed it back to residential, and that's the way it's been.
So you'd have almost half the grandfather. Yeah, the, the reason why I bring this up, one of the, one of the main highlights reason why I bring this up is that we do have a wonderful area here in town, that being the Cranland Airport, that is not in a business zone, so there, there's, there's no way that somebody could, I don't believe, I'm not the person that makes the assumption, I don't believe anybody could ever fly a charter flight out of there. I'm not sure if they would, you know, like a small sandpiper airlines or something, I don't know if you could.
There's actually already businesses in there, there's, you know, um.
To my point, there's already businesses that are there.
Parachute company.
Yeah, that's right, so not, not, that's, that, the parachute companies and one of the eight, there's actually another couple that's in there. Yeah, that's right, so not, not, that's, that the parachute companies and one of the eight, there's actually another couple that's in it. So not, not, not talking about the uh encompassing cranberry projects around the Cranland Airport, with the Cranland Airport itself, and then all the businesses that are done along, all the way up to that South Street, Union Street intersection. If I was to look, and I've looked at a lot of areas, if I was to look at anything about trying to stretch the purposes of the business district, it would be to, to, to grab that stretch again, because it, it just seems like, you know, if that's the case, like Alice is pointing out, that there was a previous change of zone, that people didn't love it, the fact that there's already a ton of businesses right along that whole stretch.
Any question? Can't we just make it, you know, mixed use too?
You could do a mixed use.
That covers everything, because there's residential and business in there.
You could do a mixed use overlay as, as you have down on Main Street.
So it'd be a business.
Which was also part of this discussion, you know, looking at expanding that as a potential.
So it's, it would be, it would be a business residential double A overlay?
That in the white is a, that's residence A.
A, sorry, residence A. And if that's the case, how does, what's the application of that? Which is the lesser of? The zoning, is it the business or is it the, the A?
The, I have to go back. I have to go back and look, it's in order.
Most of it's residential, right?
Believe it's.
Well, cherry.
Well, it is in that area, you're talking about.
Oh, uh, so the offshoots, yes, correct, the roads that are off, the, the Mon Ponset stretch, no, it's.
You've got the gas station, you've got the rental place.
Yep.
That's it, isn't it?
There's a realtor as a corner. A shop, as a real estate office, I can't, there's two, one, two, one, two, three mechanic shops.
Well, if I.
Yeah, there's a dotted sporadically here.
If I might, Mr. Chair, just quickly. So in a residential A and a double A zone.
If you wanna change the whole thing, all the way down to.
You have.
Overlay.
You have uses permitted by special permit. Museums, private schools, nursery schools and colleges with or without dormitory facilities, including dance, photographic and music studios, provided adequate off-street parking areas in accordance with section seven D are provided. Cemeteries, hospitals, sanit- sanitariums and other medical institutions, including medical and dental laboratories, nursing homes, rest homes and charitable institutions, telephone exchange buildings, radio stations and utility structures, provided that there are no service yards except for required parking. Funeral homes, mortuaries and crematories, home occupations such as dressmaking, home cooking, repair of portable equipment or appliance, real estate, agent, arts and crafts, selling antiques and computer-based businesses, but not including convalescent or nursing home, tourist home, motor vehicle sales or similar establishment offering services to the general public to be engaged in as, in as an accessory use of a dwelling by a resident of that dwelling upon issuance of a special permit by the Board of Appeals. So, not knowing exactly which businesses that you're, you know, do any of those businesses fall under that, they just write?
Absolutely.
So that's why they're there, because they were granted a special permit. And now what happens is if that business closes, then it can no longer be anything other than that business.
Have to reapply.
So no, so there's no other opportunities for a different business that might fit the space uh to be able to go in there. Which, again, I, I've made this example on more than one occasion, which is the old VCA on Main Street. Because it was a VCA, it could be nothing more, it, it could never be anything other than a VCA.
Without, without going back to, and they still have the option of going back to the ZBA.
Right, they would still have to go back to the ZBA, but you couldn't put in, let's say, uh, a contracting business, or split the building up and, and put in three different businesses in the back, let's say you condo out the back, you know. Uh, because it's not a business. Well, the mixed use allows, would allow retail and resident, residential, which is what you have with nine sixty-nine, nine ninety-nine.
Oh, can I just mention the problem with this, right? I live pretty close to it, drive by this area all the time. First thing is, you know, if you have an overlay of the wetlands that are there, right, and uh, and also lots, so that you could see the, the amount of residences in this area, so I, I have to, I'm concerned about, you know, uh, changing the zoning here so that, you know, business can just get a regular permit to go there. I like the idea that uh they would have to go through the ZBA uh for a variance, because it's so packed residential, and uh there's resource areas and there's all kinds, it, it almost doesn't even make sense to even think about that area from a perspective of, um, you know, like looking at from Union Street all the way to Halifax, all kinds of businesses all along that route. This is a lot different than Main Street, and, and it's very residential and very quiet. And to start allowing businesses in that area, I, I would have to think hard about that.
But there's businesses that are already along that stretch.
Right, but if, if those businesses close, right, uh, whatever new business goes there, at least we have the ability to say, you know, um, through, you know, ZBA. No, you can't put that into business here, because it's a residential area, and people would have input as to what will ultimately be put there. So um, I don't wanna lose that. I have to be honest with you, I live in that area, so do you, you know, you drive by it.
Yeah, that's what I'm actually, so I see all that, so I see, I don't, I don't ever see a mechanic shop lot ever being anything different than a mechanic shop lot.
Right, and I'd like it to continue that way, because, you know, these are grandfather businesses, right? And uh, they've been there forever, so, you know, you give them the opportunity, like, well, here you are, this is where everyone's comfortable with it, used to it. But if you zone the entire area for business, people start uh thinking about putting a, you know, a target or whatever, like you talked about.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, people start thinking that way, they'll start taking, you know, they'll start taking houses down to do it, because if you look at Lowe's and Quincy, uh, they took down two hundred houses to put up that loan.
But to your point about the wetlands and about the resource areas, I don't think they could build anything like that along there. The only thing, the only thing that you could continue as far as business along that Route fifty-eight corridor stretch would be the business that are there already, the styles of businesses. Office spaces and mechanic shop, you know, a small car lot, um, you know.
Right, yeah, I, I had to look at like, you know, the, the differences, but I, I'm just concerned that, you know, um, I, I like the idea that that's not his own business. And it's not just because I lived there, I'm concerned about like, I, you know, after South Ave, I don't really go down that way all that much. And uh, I don't wanna say I don't care what happens down there, but I do, you know, because those people live there, you know, and I know quite a few, I have customers all along Lapham Street and on that into Mon Ponset.
And the residents off, off street, off of Mon Ponset, just, the specifics, I'm talking about along the Mon Ponset corridor.
Yeah.
There's so many businesses that are along it that weren't, that are not encompassed enough.
Right, I guess, I guess my only argument, Joe, is uh, who, you know, who, in a way, who cares, like, yeah, yeah, there's businesses there because they're previously zoned and they're grandfathered and, um, you know, ideally it would be better if they were turned into, um, you know, two-family house or a residential or, you know, something to that effect. So if we were looking at the zoning to, you know, make it capable of multi-family dwellings, I'd say fine, but businesses, I'm more concerned.
So that's why my point to break it up to them is to find out what, what exactly happened, why are there businesses that are not encompassed in a business area? Mr. Ellis answered that way back, there was a change to the zoning, and that's what brought up that zone A along that corridor. Not sure why it didn't continue down through, you know, in that small section coming off of, uh, can you move the map up, Tony?
I mean, I'll, I'll get off the soapbox, but you know, it says, um, you know, bedroom community. You know, if we start uh turning every major road in town into a business zone, then what's it gonna look like?
So where that stretch, that is actually after there's business zones.
Yes.
There's a liquor store, a former restaurant.
Yep.
A mechanic shop, and then, and then a prefab, that's it, that's along that stretch. But if you go from where that stops to that intersection of Union and South Street, there's another eight businesses that are in that area, so you've got a business zone that has three businesses, oh, there's an insurance company. So there's an office space, so four businesses, and then you got, not along that other stretch, you got eight businesses. It's almost like when they made that, they, it's the wrong section, you know, I don't know.
And I, and I, I wanna be clear, I, when I brought this up, it's not because I'm looking to create Route ones throughout Hanson.
Oh, no, I, I know that.
It's more, it's more, it's more to just try and expand, and considering that Main Street is, let's say, one of the focal points right now with Hanson, and revitalization is maybe sort of just kind of stretching it a little bit.
Right. Uh. Is there any other areas?
And, and it's, and it's only because, again, the, the mechanism is, well, if they're not in a business zone, they go for a special permit, and they get the special permit, and then it's all they can be, is just that, if it becomes something else, now there's no other opportunities for Hanson, we lose out. Once that, if that business closes and walks and goes away, now we've lost that business and no one else can go in there.
But in some, in some instances, I guess.
Now, but also I'd like to say is that all these require site plan approval.
Yeah.
Through the ZBA.
Which may change.
So, um, you know, but.
Well, we've, so we've had this on the agenda, we've had on the agenda for five meetings now.
All right.
We really haven't come up with anything, you know, we, we've kind of nitpicked and scrunched and seen it, you know, but there really hasn't been any general, yeah, Tony, we did, so I, you know, the board doesn't mind, I entertain, we, we tell the town planner, don't waste any more time on it. Until this comes as an issue.
I think this is worthy of, of, of discussion, because if, if you think about it, if, if not this board, some other board decides to, to make these areas business zones, right, um, you've changed the, the uh, the rural character of the town.
Sure.
You know, and I think that's an important distinction, it's, it's in the master plans and the open space plans and the housing production plans. So all of this, these changes that we're talking about are all in the plan.
Yeah.
Right, uh, and there's reasons why they are what they are, and, you know, people have uh talked and discussed that, you know, like, if you drive down Mon Ponset Street, there's a lot of scenery to see, you know, it's not overdeveloped, and it's not like, like you said, a Route one. You know, and it's important to make sure that we don't start looking like we're coming down, you know, and that could happen.
But Tony's original point was just for us to kind of spitball it, I think, I think we've done enough. I don't think we need to keep carrying on, if we need to bring it up again, we can certainly bring it up again.
Okay.
With Tony's added as a runner on the agenda for the past five meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think there's any general discussion, we need to have Tony waste any more time in, in, in his daily looking at it.
What else do we have to do with this?
Nothing, nothing, this is Tony was asking us if we had anything.
So you're saying leave it alone, but I, I think it's worthy of discussion, I mean, you know, maybe not in that particular stretch, but maybe there's other areas in town. Like I know, early, previously in another meeting, we talked about Spring Street.
Right.
And where Danians is in that area, and why not extend, you know, like I know, uh, only the front portion of the, those sites are business zone, uh, do we wanna encourage more businesses in that area as well, or is, is what we have, is it enough? You know, so I mean, that's the only real discussion, is, is what we have enough elsewhere other than, you know, I know everyone's excited about Main Street redevelopment and cleaning it up, but none of those other areas, except that one, one lot on Spring Street where the guy's just throwing shit in the yard. You know, other than that, everyone else seems to, you know, their business that no one has any objections to.
Right, right.
You know, so why change it if it doesn't?
I think it's a suggestion, yeah, Mr. Ellis. I, you know, what he's talking about is, is true, but why not extend between the intersection of being business at the lights all the way into Bryant Brook? That would make it more developable area.
Oh, uh, right there.
Yeah, along Main Street, right there.
By Route twenty-seven.
Just connected. All connected all the way down, just make it Main Street. I mean, going down Mon Ponset Street, I don't think it's, there's enough land here, when you're looking at it, at this here, to put anything in, except for small shops and things. And if they want, a lot of them can go in anyway with what John was saying, go in to get a.
A ZBA approval.
Right, yeah, a, a special permit approval. But how about Main Street, that's a lot of huff in the area there.
I, I guess, I'm, I'm looking at to some degree is, is that all these special permit businesses, if they go, then they're gone. Unless someone's gonna come in and do the exact same business.
Right.
And I think maybe you lose some opportunities there.
Does it have to be the exact same, or can it be under the same umbrella?
My understanding is that's the same business.
If it's a car shop, there has to be a car shop rather than a wash machine shop.
Correct.
But it also has to be, like, the new owner has to go in and reaffirm their uh ability to be there.
Yes.
You know, so there is a hearing, it's still, that still happens.
Yeah.
So, you know, they would still have to go in and, you know, that's the opportunity where, you know, if the place is looking rundown, you might suggest some upgrade. So it's good to have that uh, that fluid ability to, you know, uh, look at a business and how it's been operated in the past. Whereas if it's business zone, anyone can go there and do anything they want, so you lose some ability to control the rural character of those areas. You know, like, if you look at uh Main Street, you can go down, all the way down to Robinson Street, right? But after that, uh, it pretty much, other than, um, you know, the, the VCA, it's pretty residential. So are we gonna inflict commercial development on all those residents in those areas and, and the traffic that comes with it and everything else? Just my thought.
So it seems that the planners ask of the planning board to look at, into this over these five meetings, there's been a little bit of discussion, but I don't think there's anything, I don't see anything to bring it to front burner, Tony. You know, certainly have a back burner, and, you know, at the ready, if we need some to discuss, would you, would you guys agree?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, okay, yeah, so.
Yeah, so maybe.
Hopefully that survives what you're asking us.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's exactly it, it was running up the flagpole, see who salutes, and if there's no, because obviously to do that, there's a lot of work involved.
Right.
And if it's not something that is, in, there's, there's no interest, then I'm not gonna pursue it.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah, so I think, I think we've had a fairly decent amount of discussion about it, so.
So can I again just say one quick thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, sometimes when, when we look at this stuff, right, we're looking at it in the vacuum, without really looking at the master plan, and I know those documents are, you know, it's like uh watching paint dry, trying to read them, you know, like, what do I have to do to stay awake, you know? But the truth of it is, is there's a lot of information in those documents, and a lot of the things that we're talking about, um, back and forth about business zoning and everything else, it's kind of in there, and it's pretty much saying, we're kind of done.
Yeah.
We wanna be, you know, people wanna maintain the rural character of the town as much as they possibly can.
So we can keep, I guess, bringing up, after the master plan is approved, we're bringing up as a topic, a discussion then? Other than that, you know, if something comes out of that development.
I think there's someone in the audience that may want to speak on. No, yes?
Um, I hate to see you just get pushed under the rug, I think the town needs.
Well, before you.
Yeah, absolutely, can you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, sure, Denise Clinton.
Hi Denise, and you live in?
I live in Duxbury.
In Duxbury, okay, do you, do you own a business in town?
Uh, no, I have, um, I'm a realtor.
Okay.
So I have a couple folks that are, actually not, just currently, um, right up on Liberty eighty-four, and that was, that's been a problem for the, the property owner, because there's a residential, it's a split, the front part of the lot is commercial.
Sure.
And then there's this residential part at the back, so anybody who wants to come in and bring in new business into the town, you know, right where it's all businesses already, has this half, I could do half of the lot commercial, but I can't use the whole lot for commercial, I can't use the whole lot for residential, and no one necessarily, unless they're gonna do a condo or clustered, wouldn't wanna put a single family home necessarily on that.
Right.
On fifty-eight. Um, so I'm here to just sort of explore some of those lots that have these, you know, lines going through the middle of them, so it sort of kills both options.
Absolutely.
Both opportunities to just do something, you know, bring something in to the community. And then a few other people have approached me, in fact, um, Mrs. Huntley, I think that Tony was the letter.
Yep.
Right across the street, um, at Setalite says a piece of property, so she's been asking me to um help her figure out, well, she could do with that lot, she's out of, and it made, that made sense in many ways to have that piece of property uh business.
Yeah.
Instead of residential, because again, who wants to build a new post at Setalite?
Yeah, I get you, a hundred percent.
So that's my interest.
Yeah, I certainly don't want you to have the impression that we would brush anything on the right, we certainly wouldn't do that. Uh, but at the same time, uh, unless it was, it through, as you know, unless it was through an official application, or if there was a petition to change or something like that, we wouldn't be able to, you know, look at changing the zoning based off of, you know, the, the one as opposed to what, what the majority opinion of the town is. We have had this on for five meetings, uh, the board members have talked with constituents or come up with their own thoughts or ideas and looked at the zoning as the planner requested. There is a lot of general uh feeling around the existing of the town Hanson, that the veteran community is what everybody's for. Uh, that, that's loud and proud whenever we do any kind of outreach and public, um, you know, public opinion and things like that, so even when we come up with this master plan change coming up, there's gonna be public outreach again, with the last one, it was very much the same. Uh, it's the open space, the veteran community, the small quaint, uh, which is a, which is a balance of issue, because then we also have a failure of economic development, or I don't wanna say failure, it's not the right term, but we have a low economic development. So there's this crazy balance that we have to try to put, put forward.
And I did attend that, that that meeting as well because that's what, that's where I. What I do is what I, that's what I see.
Sure.
Economic development, not just in the Hanson.
Yeah, sure.
So people come to, come to me to look at this land and water, give it some development. And, and it's just those split lots.
Yeah, well, so there is a.
They're like, get a business up.
But there is a mechanism to be able to take care of that.
Yeah.
So our, our Z B A has our, our special granting authority to be able to look at that.
Yes.
So Tony, can you go in the address that she's talking about? Like, let me point that out where that is.
Right here.
So we do have, there is a mechanism. It's a little bit, you know, it's a little bureaucratic to go through that process. Uh, but there is one that is in place to be able to ask for that from the town. As we're discovering tonight. If there are businesses along Route fifty-eight going down towards Halifax that have applied for that and been granted for that in the past. You know, it exists for people to be able to, you know, to have properties.
I just started the process and that particular lot on Liberty eighty-four, the one that's clear next to the, the back.
It's in the blue.
I sold, I sold it.
Right in the blue in the corner.
Right by, right by the elements.
Yeah, up on Main Street to the left.
Yeah, that's the Huntley properties.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's that one. The other one I'm talking about is way up. Heading towards McDonald's. Anyway, I sold it from previous owner to this owner and I have a lot, several people come to, are interested in bringing business in, but. It's that residential component at the back that they can't bring, they can't even pave. A lot for the business because of that's there. So it's an existing. A lot in an existing business area that's split residential and commercial, almost down the middle.
So couldn't, couldn't that be, uh, addressed in a. Special permit process? You know, like, couldn't they go to?
You could encroach, you could, you could encroach thirty feet into the residential with the business. But that's, that's about it.
Cause I know, like, in the back, behind some of these areas here.
There's a water easement.
There's a, there's a water easement and there's also, um, I think there's a stream back there somewhere close by.
It's definitely, I mean, Webby did a lot of engineering for the previous owner.
That's a, a Rockland water main that I'm talking about.
Yes.
Are we talking a lot that's behind?
The lot I'm talking about is right next to the back.
We've discussed this lot in the past.
Yeah, and you said that it was, they're not talking about the house, though.
It's not mine.
No, I meant the house down on, on, uh, Lenzers Street.
No, it's a different one.
Did you say that Webby engineered?
Webby's done some engineering on that. On the one I'm talking about that I'm, I've listed currently.
You're talking about the culvert in the back?
No, no. The one she's discussing is this one, yeah. That's highlighted.
Yeah, right, to the right of the V C A.
Yes.
Are you talking, are you referring to the culvert out in the back?
For the residential component?
No, no, see that, what he, what he's saying is, there's a cul, if you go back in the, in the back of that property, right? Just after where V C A is, um, it's, there's an easement there for a water main that runs through there.
The zone.
And I, and I look back on this because at our last meeting, we had discussed why, why we have like a, that type of a zoning area there. And I think at the time, the feeling was if you look at lot nine dash one A, uh, three, five, three, four. And all in that area, it's all residential. And also that twelve, one, uh, see that green thing there? Uh, there's a, there's a wetland finger that runs back there. I believe there's a vernal pool back there as well. So I think at the time when they were doing the zoning, right, uh, that was all considered. They said, well, if we just zone it residential. Then, you know, uh, no one's gonna really put anything there because the rest of it's zone business. So I think that's why that happened like that. That doesn't make it right, but, you know, I'm just pointing out that, you know, uh, that was likely why.
So the sun side is the commercial side that they can't build back into. So they wanted to put a, I don't know, a store or something. Anything that the town could use. Then it, they can't, you know, approach into the residential component.
Right.
But if someone came in and wanted to do a. A residential component or something.
Right.
Which it's not really suitable for that, for the development. Um, go into the commercial places. It kind of kills both options.
I don't think on that specific.
Line.
Uh, I'm not an engineer, but I don't think on that specific lot, I don't think that the commercial could be extended.
That's what I'm saying. The commercial cannot go further back into the residential.
Even if the zoning was changed?
Well, if, if the residential component, if it was all commercial.
I don't think it could be.
It actually could.
I've got boots-on-the-ground experience with the lot itself. I don't think it could be.
I mean, I don't know if it could be, although, I mean, I, Webby did the work and I have all the stuff back to it and everything. But I'm not here to, you know.
Yeah, no, I got you.
I just, it's, it can't, it's not a successful lot. I guess that's the one we're looking at. For one use or the other.
Right.
And so it's sort of like this dead zone because it's, you know, right in the middle. So it's neither this nor that.
Well, you know, just, you know, for, for your identification, originally, that lot was, uh, held by the town for the purposes of. If the septic system were to fail at the school.
The little thin lot next to it.
Yeah, the little sliver.
Yeah, that's next door.
Right, so, uh, but that whole area was done for that, that, the idea that, you know, uh, if the septic needed to be, um. Figured out that.
Yeah, it's probably a good one.
Yeah.
Mr. Ellis, you have a comment? You're okay. Thank you. Sure.
Okay.
One question. Isn't there something on, on, when you've got a commercial lot that you can go a certain amount of.
Thirty feet.
Yeah, yeah, thirty feet.
Oh, just thirty feet? So where do they go back? Two fifty? Now? I think this isn't a two hundred fifty feet back up there.
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five. Well, you can only add thirty feet to it then.
So anyway. Not sure there's any more to discuss on that. Mr. Chair?
No, I don't think so. I, it'll certainly come up as topic again. I appreciate your comment and thank you. I appreciate the coming in. And, uh, and certainly, yeah, if you, if you have this, you know, obviously experience.
The more I know.
Yeah.
Because they do have people that have, that have owned land in town for quite some time.
Yeah.
And wanna sell their estates or do something. And so that's sort of where I come in.
Sure, sure.
Form, but I'm just also trying to, you know, educate myself about what they possibly do. Drive me up there or save a plan.
I got you. Yeah, I got you. Probably at the auction, huh?
Yeah, the town, that little lot.
Uh, the, the former septic area, yeah, it was.
Next door, yeah.
So who owns it?
I'm not sure who owns it off that.
Andy's town.
Oh, okay. Andy's?
Yeah.
From Brockton?
Uh, I hope it's from Brockton, I thought Kingston, but that's a little bit. Because I approached him to see if he wanted a solar field for.
Kevin, sit back down.
I heard somebody wanted to put a, um, a solar field in there somewhere.
I don't think there's enough sightline to be able to get sunlight out of it.
But that's, that's actually not too invasive, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
For a use. I'm interested.
Appreciate, appreciate your time. Appreciate you coming in and your comments.
Is there anything else I should say for? What's your next, um?
Just board business updates.
Okay.
Um, I don't, uh.
No, really, it's, yeah, it's just board business.
You certainly want to welcome to.
Oh, no, I know. You could, I'd ask.
And I, I'm sorry, I didn't know that you were here for this particular, I would have taken that.
Oh, no, that's fine. I'm interested in hearing what everybody has to say.
Appreciate your time. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
And, um, we'll pitch you the next time.
You got it. Thank you. Uh, so moving on to board business, uh, board subcommittee updates. Nothing for open space. That's not gonna kick off, we know, until our master plan gets heavily involved. They start asking for that input. I think that's when the board's gonna get back together. And O C P C had their, uh, recent junket.
I'm just saying.
Did you hear it?
Good.
Yeah, it was good. Did you go?
Um, yes.
Yeah, it was a good time?
Yeah.
Did I have a food?
Pretty good.
Yeah.
And brought the network and shake in, you know.
Uh, Mr.?
Sit up by himself, though.
I did, yeah.
Yeah.
I did, I did, I did a little earlier.
Mr. Ellis, High Street Park.
Yep, we're mov- we're moving along.
Moving along. Breaking ground next week, right?
Yeah, yeah. The big equipment steam shovels are coming in, the big ones going in.
I'm sorry, your ticket was one entry only. You're not allowed to come back in. Steam shovels. Steam shovels are going.
No, it's going good. Have you heard from, uh, anybody on the back?
No.
Plan or any of that?
No, I am.
All right, I'm set to get together with you.
Is that from Land Planner, is it? Land Planner?
No, no.
No, 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 the, the plan is for the park and stuff. You know, the land plan is pretty much done right now.
Okay.
Uh, town planner was reviewing them.
Oh, nice.
At some point, we gotta bring them together. I, I have spoke, I don't know if I taught you or not, but I have spoken to the, uh, wire department about that easement.
Yeah, you mentioned that.
Yeah, okay.
So something you think we'd be putting forward in a fall town meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if the park committee, uh, wants to put it, you know, we can get it up on the webpage, we can get it up on our webpage.
Yeah.
We can get it up on social media, say this, here's the park.
Yeah.
Or, you know, here's.
Well, I think so, but I'd better find out from some of the other people.
Right, right. I mean, the, you know, that committee is on their own, but if they. Want to get it out there, we can always put it up on the planning board, uh, webpage. Just let, just let us know.
I think we should move the two hole up there right away. Just put it on.
A what? Andy's town, the two, the two hole, huh?
Two hole?
Yeah, up, up by, um. A two hole is a, is two, uh, latrines.
Yeah, I, I know what you're talking about. Right, they're actually together.
They actually go up to the, you know, that park right away.
Isn't there, isn't there two, is there no two hole down on the LZ Thomas property?
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Ellis?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
That's the coverage we're working on.
Appreciate it. We took a, uh.
It's a blank page.
Yeah, we, we took a nice tour of the, uh, W H C A facility in Whitney. And, uh, we'll be putting out a, uh.
What's the H C A?
Uh, Women Hanson Community Access.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, we'll be doing a recording up there in January and, uh. We, we don't have an air date yet, but we'll be putting out some information.
Great.
Yeah.
Mr. Kemmet? Well, I have a bunch of stuff, but I'll make it as brief as possible. Uh, Community Preservation is, uh, looking at, um. Possibly financing, uh, an update to the, what is that plan called?
Housing Production Plan.
Housing Production Plan. So we're looking at that and we also have, um, some stuff, um. What else? That's probably about it. That really concerned you guys. Um. Yeah, that, that's good enough. Well, thanks for reading.
I don't know. That's the housing H H P. Do you know, is Judy Barrett gonna be involved now again?
I, I can add to that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, so a housing production plan is gonna set to expire, I believe it's May first of twenty twenty-four. So I've begun the process of trying to find, uh. What, what is the process to rev, to update our housing production plan? So I reached out to the spokes at the state. There's no real, uh, let's say, fill out a form and you can just add some information and you're up to date. Uh, they suggested, uh, going back to the company that created the housing production plan, which they had a copy of at the state level. And said, you know, Barrett. So I've reached out to that firm. Uh, they did get back to me. We're trying to set up a time to discuss at that same time. The state had also mentioned about grant funding opportunities and then I did a little research and that found C P C can. Uh, that's one avenue to pursue funding for, uh, updating the housing production plan. I reached out to the chair of the, uh, C P C, Mr. Kemmet, and we've had some discussions to try and, uh. So I'm trying to get a meeting with Mrs. Barrett or Ms. Barrett.
Yeah.
And find out process, cost, and I can bring that to the C P C. To get an idea of the cost and see if, if they can put some money into it. And if there's any potential grant funding opportunities to help us. I'd like to try and get the process. Started before we expire versus after we expire, you know?
I know there's gonna be some upcoming communications with Hanson Housing with the grant funding available from them.
Yes.
Perfectly. Yeah, okay, great.
So on that note, just so you know, you know, we have several projects. We have an open space, uh, thing, uh, application coming in. For an acquisition.
Okay.
Which is competing with Tony's plan because, uh, we can only use our administrative funds without going to town meeting. And we only have limited funds that we can use for, uh, surveys, things like that. So what he's asking fits in perfect with that. Right? But our open space acquisition plan, uh, not so much.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, I'm getting a lot of pressure because everyone wants to acquire this open space because of its values.
Okay.
You know, conservation and other interested parties.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and, um, I, um, put together a meeting and invited yourself and Tony to and for. Uh, the Housing Authority to discuss some of the possibilities of, uh, some of the plans that Tony's talked about. And trying to bring those forward, you know, with, uh, help from both the Housing Authority, outside agencies, uh, you know, we're trying to come up with some kind of a plan. You know, combined with C P C funds to try and do something with L Z Thomas and stuff. You know, rather than talk about it, do something, you know, like get some, you know, money on the ground, some shovels and.
Yeah.
Stuff like that. So we're working on it. I'm hoping that the meeting, um, on, uh, January eleventh, which is a public meeting. Anyone can go if they want. And I think we're gonna post that so that anyone on the planning board wants to go, they can go and listen and, you know, get some input or stuff. Some of the thinking on that. And, uh, we also have a project coming in, um, for the front of, um, where. The, um, the food pantry is, you know, the nurses' quarters in the front. There's somebody who's interested in, uh, developing that into some kind of a, like, um. Mental health facility.
Okay.
So, uh, that seems like a good use for that site, you know? And so, uh, we're gonna entertain that, whether we can fund that or not. But other than that, I think that's about it.
Do we know what the la, do we know what the, uh, Hanson Housing Production Plan costs? The last cost was?
I do not know, but I'll go through our files and see if I can find.
Be forced to, be forced to go through the procurement process with that and get bids and.
Again, I'll have to go through the, through our records to see what was done.
May town any coming up and. You know, I think. Touch recaches available.
So the housing production plan, I don't know if you guys have read it or not, but it's kind of like, um, you know.
Every day, every day, John.
We're all together and we're all like, thinking alike. It's mostly with that document. It's about, there's some, uh, demographic information about, which you can find in both. The open space plan, you know, like, this, this information's already out there and it's been updated since that plan was updated. So to me, it just seems like it just needs an edit, you know? So, uh, if that, if that goes over, uh, whatever funds we have available. I'd be like, I'd, I'd have to question that one because it's, you know, um.
It's pretty detailed.
Yeah, you know, it, it's not a huge plan, you know what I mean? So, uh, I don't know, let's hope.
I've always kind of read that as a mini. Chapter of a mini master plan.
Really what it is, is it, it's almost like a, um, like a legal document between the state and the town that, you know, um. You know, we're gonna work toward, um, getting.
Ten percent.
The ten percent and so forth.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. All right. Uh, Mr. Benardaro?
I actually had a conversation with Ed Hill, who is on the train to Boston, believe it or not. So yeah, so uh, our plan is to one meet together, then pulling in everyone else that was there before um, in the beginning of the year. So we have reconstruction going on.
Nice.
Can I make a suggestion? Like currently and in the past and historically, the uh, the highway service has been the one that uh, was, you know, running that whole thing. I think that needs to change because it just seems like in the last twenty four years, it's like they don't really wanna get involved in it all that much because, you know, they have town employees, they don't wanna meet at night, and I hear all of that. So I wonder if it, it's time to have him as a liaison person, someone you could talk to and discuss things, but meet independent of that because it seems to be, in my mind, a stumbling block to forward movement in that whole thing. So that's just me. Thank you.
All right, anything else uh, regarding the order for board business? And then you go to Tom Planner for administration, Tom Planner, update.
Um, first, I'd like to go over some uh, correspondence that uh, we've received. First one is a letter that was dated November eighteenth, twenty twenty three, uh, addressed to Joe Campbell, Chair, Planning Board. Uh, Dear Joe, and what this uh, letter is referring to is I'm gonna call up, put the plan.
I'm gonna read it to Tony and you can put the plan up?
Sure.
So the letter states, Dear Joe, recently the planning board approved an ANI for Zero West Washington Street, a large parcel that is largely wetland. In doing so, the board apparently agreed with land planning that the parcel can be considered an estate lot. The result is that a residence will be built within fifty feet of the street, just as the homes on the rest of the street, but without the one hundred and seventy five foot frontage required in the double A zone. The lot was previously approved by the planning board with the required frontage, but was subsequently revised by land planning to remove the portion of the lot that provided the frontage. This makes no sense. Hanson deserves better planning than to degrade the neighborhood by allowing a non-conforming lot because of a perceived loophole in zoning regulation. I recommend that your board revise the zoning rules to eliminate the possibility of a street lot being labeled an estate lot in the future, respectfully, Frank Skellinger, seventy five Spring Street, Hanson, CC to the Select Board, Zoning Board of Appeals. What a help from the town planner. So in September of twenty two, specifically with September twelfth of twenty two, the board had received the application.
So.
Of the ANR D C point.
Right, it was an ANR plan and they reduced the frontage. This was lot two, had a hundred and seventy five feet of frontage at the street. This lot was created in nineteen eighty. And they added a parcel in the back with upland so that the lot would meet the upland requirement. As you can see, there is a wetland between the upland area in the back and the street. And the lot, my understanding is uh, on the market. And they had less than the required one seventy five, but more than the forty feet. And so it does fall within, with the definition under our current bylaw of a, an estate lot. And I'm just trying to pull up some of the language.
So I know when we did um, we talked about this with pushing trails at, at one point where, you know, it was a lot, it, it's the same scenario where, you know, and I thought we were gonna uh, create a bylaw that didn't allow people to use inaccessible um, upland to add to, you know, the front of the lot. Like, you know, this lot that really by all rights shouldn't have been built on in the first place because those uplands in the back are contiguous to the up, the uplands in the front.
So.
But the way that the current ANR came before the board, the current zoning.
Yeah.
That, you know, it's, I don't, I don't wanna say it's a loophole, because that's, I think that's a improper, improper term. Yeah, but it did what they were supposed to do. They changed the lot so that it was conforming and, and there is no.
So both lots are conforming at this point then, right?
Yeah. So where the house is built, there's nothing in the regulation that states where, you know, you have to place the house. And that's where the contention is.
So, yeah, it's a.
We have it there.
The board, I mean, it's, you know, if I was before the board and I had a client that brought that lot to me and said, I'd like to try and get this lot. Now, one, one question, I'm not sure why the engineer did it the way he did. And the reason I asked that, say that is because the lot was created in nineteen eighty and it had a hundred and seventy five feet of frontage. At the time, based on what I could research, the requirement of, let's say, a hundred and seventy five feet of the street and a hundred and seventy five feet at the hundred foot setback didn't exist. So that lot would have been considered, in my opinion, an existing non-conforming lot. And you can add to a lot. So they could have added the parcel in the back and added the upland to make the upland requirement and it would have met the lot. Now, maybe there was something uh, that maybe the property next door, they would do, wanted a more buffer, I don't know. So I can't, I can't explain, I can't tell you what their thought process was. But looking at, you know, our current zoning bylaw, it says, you know, uh, all setbacks, it says, well, the minimum frontage, the minimum required frontage may be reduced to forty feet in a residential district. Now, when you say to maybe reduced to forty, I would interpret that as anywhere between forty and once, and one, whatever the, whatever it is, one seventy five, one fifty is fair game. And then you also have, it says, all setbacks shall be at least fifty feet. All setbacks shall be fifty feet. So that tells me that if I wanna put my house fifty feet from the road, I can. The zoning is saying that. It's saying all setbacks. Now, is it written well? You know, probably not. Is it ambiguous? Does it open up, we'll call it loopholes interpretation? Absolutely. And so that's what they did. They look at the zoning bylaw, that's what you do. You look at the zoning bylaw and try and meet the zoning bylaw. Now, one thing that the board, the planning board, you're limited to what you can do when you're looking at the format. It's right in the subdivision control law. And then in the end, you sign off, you're not saying that that law conforms to zoning. That is up to the determination of the zoning enforcement officer. So that means when that person, if that person just chooses to pull a building permit, he could, even if the planning board approved the plan, he could turn around and say, I don't agree with it and therefore I'm not gonna issue a permit.
Correct.
So that.
Which for the record, conveniently, the letter that was written and submitted to the board was not CC'd to the, just for the record, it was not CC'd to the zoning enforcement or building office. It was Select Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, more help from the town planner.
Yeah, but can you, can you bring up that lot for one second? I, I think I get the reason of why he's doing this, but I, I don't necessarily agree with it. So if you look at that lot, right, um, the one, the one on the, on the right, right, um, by virtue of the Wells Protection Act, right, in the local bylaw, um, that, that lot shouldn't have been built. So the only way they could have done it was to get a variance from the uh, from the board.
Conservation.
Not really. If they, I.
From Conservation Commission.
I think if they had left that lot in the configuration it was from nineteen eighty and then added backland because the zoning bylaw, when it comes to upland, it doesn't say contiguous.
No, it doesn't. We talked about that.
Right, which was, which was one of the amendments in one of the articles that wound up dying on the vine, which was gonna correct that. Which would, would have then, if that bylaw existed, then they wouldn't have been able to do that law because right now, the bylaw reaches, I can patchwork together uplands all over my lot to make it.
Was that the reason Article thirty two?
Yes.
So now, my, now, my point though is the reason these guys, Nick is in a twist is because under, under, you created a buildable lot, right? Not you per se, but that, that buildable lot was created, but, but according to conservation rules, it, it couldn't be built on because under their rules, can, you can't have, uh, the land has to be contiguous upland under, under the Wetland Protection Act, right? So um, you know, it, it does. You know, at least because of our zoning bylaw, right, uh, you, it has to be contiguous with what's in the back. So uh, the size of that lot is okay, but you're looking at a hundred foot buffer from the edge of the C nineteen, it, it just takes away the ability to build on that lot. Am I, am I wrong about that? I haven't really looked at it a lot.
Well, I'd say that the zoning bylaw, which is what creates the lot, is, says that it, the upland doesn't have to be contiguous, so they don't have to touch each other.
Right, I understand that, but there's two bylaws that we're talking about. Talking about the wetlands bylaw, right?
But the question becomes which one is.
Which one supersedes?
Which one supersedes the other?
They don't supersede each other. So you can create that lot under, under um, planning, right? But under the Wetland Protection Act, they can't use it because, you know.
When you're saying, you're saying to the, but you're saying the Wells Protection Act or you're saying the local wetland bylaw?
Both. Right, so uh, you know, under the local, under the local bylaw, um, that back uh, upland can't be used to, for the size of that uh, front lot. And I believe that's true under the wetlands, the state Wetlands Protection Act.
Which, which, if, if that's fact, which would bring the point out that yes, the board has no tape to stop the creation of a lot, but it will never be built on, you know, good luck bringing that to the.
It shouldn't, but you know, unless people are paying attention to what, you know, the Wetland Protection Act and the, and the local wetlands bylaw uh, calls out to. I'm just saying, I think that's why Frank is writing his letters because he thinks that you've created a lot that someone can actually build on, but they can't because of the Wetland Protection Act. Or they shouldn't be able to.
Could they request the overland permit to the back area?
No, because, you know, it says in the, in the rules that all upland has to be contiguous, right? It doesn't say that in our bylaw for the, uh, for the creation of the lot.
Right, right.
Under the Wells Protection Act, it says that uplands, in order to be counted as uplands for the use, for the sake of creating a, a residence there, uh, it would have to be contiguous.
So, so it was addressed, it was addressed, that was in a, it was in an article change or it was in an article, what was it? It was Article thirty two, was it not?
It was part of Article thirty two.
It was part of Article thirty two, which died on the vine and was turned down at town meeting.
If it was contiguous, if this was contiguous, the word, because I remember when this came in and, and it was this patchwork of upland. And I said, it's because we don't have the word contiguous. I said, but that's gonna change. And if contiguous was in there, then this lot would have, you would have been able to just shoot this plan down because of the fact that it was, you know, didn't meet the upland requirement.
So what, what I'm trying to say is I think this is what, you know, like, like from a perspective of conservation, which, you know, I spent ten years on there before I came here. And I, and I would have, the first question I would have asked, look in this, why would the hell would they allow this to happen when under the Wells Protection Act, you can't build there anyway, so why create a, a lot? You know what I'm saying?
And I believe that, I believe that at the time, I believe at the time that this came in, it might, it may have been with another ANR that had come in. Dr. Skellinger submitted a letter at that time, saying the same thing. It was determined again at that time that yes, we may agree with his opinion. But the law, the regulation, it's all black and white, states that we have no reason to deny.
So that's something I think, you know, needs to be clarified with him. None of the options of, of saying, you know, well, just because there's not a buildable under the Wells Protection Act, doesn't mean we can deny the lot, right? So, you know, it's a moot point.
Yeah, so we did try to address it. We put that before the town meeting and it died on the vine, so so the, the grievance per se may instead not be with the board. It shouldn't be with the board, but instead it's with the citizens of the town that voted on Article thirty two.
Well, let me ask you this. I mean, we've gotten this letter, right? Are we gonna respond to this letter or are we just kind of ignoring it or? Like, I mean, can't we explain to this guy somehow that, you know, uh, we don't have the options that they have in the, our regulations to, uh, to make these changes?
So, I can respond.
I can, I can craft a letter, a draft letter responding to uh, his concerns. And I can bring it up at the next meeting.
Yeah, but we're not allowed to, um, is it a year? Is it a year? To be able to bring the same change so they, to the zoning?
Uh, two years.
So we're not, we're gonna be able to do, please let them know that we're not gonna be able to do anything until twenty twenty six?
Like, you know, there's other things that, you know, when we do examine that, that for instance, there's another municipality that I did a lot of work in that they had retreat lots and it specifically said thirty feet of frontage. Period. That was it. Thirty feet of frontage for like X amount of feet and then you could open up or add something to that effect or. But it was thirty feet of frontage. There was no can maybe reduced. There was no, it was thirty feet. And you, and it was actually a two-step process in this particular municipality where you had to go for a special permit, the zoning board, to get it. And then you went to the, then you went to the uh, planning board with an ANR.
For the lot, but you still can't create a, a non-conforming lot to.
No, you can't.
So if, you'd have to have a lot that had more than, uh, whatever, whether it's a hundred and fifty or one seventy five, whatever the difference is between that, you have to have that. So you don't have to get all fancy because, you know, if you wanna create a thirty foot thing to get to a retreat lot, if you only have a hundred and seventy five feet, it's not gonna happen, right?
Right, but what I'm saying is, is let's say you want to tighten up, what, what, what's your definition of an estate lot? So you don't want what you consider a, so this is an estate lot, but they can build out by the road. And if the, uh, idea of the estate law is for people to build out in the back, then, you know, if you say, okay, you know, it's forty feet of frontage for two hundred feet or something along that line, now you're forcing it to go to the back. You're not, you know, people are not gonna be able to build by the road. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, but all those funny little things all around that thing tells, tells me that, that's never gonna happen.
So, uh, so anyway.
Little shrubs. You got two, you got two things here that you're trying to do.
Yeah.
And, and the Wetland Protection Act's gone by itself. So if it's there, they can't go beyond it.
Right.
All right, or within twenty five feet of it or whatever the regulation may be. But what you, if, if that was, we wouldn't be talking about this if that lot wetlands was another hundred feet back.
Correct.
Then everybody would be happy.
Yeah, I guess the house would, would be back in there.
So you're advocating we should drain the hundred feet back?
Drain the swamp.
You know, so you get a buildable lot and, and then somebody gets to bu, build themselves a house there. They're just restricted for doing that.
I think they had a buildable lot before they even did this.
Right.
So why they did it, I don't know, but it's not up to me to tell them or ask the question. Why, why, why are you gonna do, why are you doing this? Because you already have a buildable lot.
Mr. Kemet?
What he had before, I can see it right from here. He had circumvented the hundred and seventy five feet of frontage. I think it's one seventy five, right?
Yeah, it was one, it was one seventy five. This, this lot was created in nineteen eighty.
He went back, I don't know, fifteen feet and cut a little slot off.
Call it the X.
And then he had his frontage.
Which, which was.
That was to circumvent the bylaw.
Right, because in nineteen eighty.
Right.
There, there was no bylaw saying one seventy five at the street and one seventy five feet, a hundred feet back.
Right.
Right, they didn't have the hundred fi, hundred foot back bylaw, but they did have the one seventy five. So he circumvented it by going into the other piece of property and then coming back and shooting up that other line. But for whatever reason, I don't know why, he decided he wanted to go back and just make it a retreat lot. He wanted to put whatever land he's got combined with parcel A with whatever the parcel is. I have no idea what that little shop is.
I'm guessing they were, I'm guessing they tried.
Messing himself up.
Yeah, I'm guessing they tr, they increased the setback for the shop for some reason, because other than that.
Yeah, twenty six and thirty five.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, that's exactly what it was.
Yeah.
Because I, I remember this going in the Wayback Machine. And the only reason they were able to do uh, the parcel A is because, see those little fingers over there, or C three, C forty eight, those are all contiguous to that lot. So that has enough um, upland in order to support what's been built there. But what I'm saying is the, the lot on the right does not have enough upland to support the construction of a building. Right, well, that, that's one of the reasons, but normally, that's not a problem. That's not a problem. I mean, somebody's building a house there and he's restricted to setbacks for the neighbors for fifty feet. That's all. That's what they did. Originally, they came out, oh, I don't know, thirty years ago, forty years ago, somebody down the Cape put all forty foot lots together.
Oh, yeah.
And it was part of a.
One hundred and fifty.
Right, and, and they had a thirty lots, all one forty foot lots, and they expanded out and somehow they got the land area. Well, they came out and the state come out and said, you can't do this anymore, but Hanson came out with a bylaw, we had two of them together.
You're talking about the Niantucket case?
Yeah, on all the stretch backs and then over, stretch and over.
Yeah, that, that became, that became the vital access case.
So Hanson decided, Hanson decided that's not gonna happen here because they make the bylaw said they can't be together. Two by, two.
Two hammerhead lots.
Head lots can't be together. It has to be a full lot in between. You know, but now, that's the same thing. He's just got a lot more distance in the anger in the back. I mean.
But, but go through, but go through, go through the process, go through the process, had the board denied it in September. All they would have filed with is land court and explained that, you know, their, their application and land court would have overturned it. Because land court would have looked at the black and white of the zoning and said, yeah, no, they had no right to deny this.
Yeah, I think maybe there's a concern that uh, you know, well, you know, maybe that would have happened, maybe the person would have pursued it in court, maybe they wouldn't have pursued it in court.
Yes.
It, it's, I, I, you know, there's, you're, you're under a strict, I mean, subdivision control tells you what you can and can't do, what you can and can't look at.
In your opinion, Tony, so here we go, solidify this. In your opinion, knowing that there's probably some more access lot, hammerhead lot, whatever you wanna call them, retreat lots coming our way, there probably are. Do you feel the, the need for us to change, for any reason for us to look at the zoning and change this up?
I do, and then the reason why I say, I, I agree how I say that is just one of the reasons is it says fifty feet from all setbacks. Fifty feet from all setbacks, if I'm, as a land surveyor, I interpret that as I could put my house fifty feet from the front yard,
Front yard, yeah.
side yard or rear. Fifty feet from all setbacks, if I'm, as a land surveyor, I interpret that as I could put my house fifty feet from the front yard, side yard, or rear yard. So if I wanna put my, so if I create a retreat lot and I wanna put my house fifty feet from the street, I can, cause your, your bylaw says I can.
Right, so would you also agree that we could not do that because the same thing came up in October town, uh, May town meeting in twenty twenty-two? Yeah, and we are not able to look at that until twenty twenty-five?
I mean, I, I mean, I mean, there's some, there's some, uh, there's some maybe tightening up of those regulations to try and prevent this. And I, and I understand it, cause if I look at this lot and I go, wow, that's a terrible lot, it really is, you know? But that's a personal opinion, it's a terrible lot. But unfortunately, when I look at the regulations and I look at the lot and I go, yeah, well, zoning bylaws, you know, it's, it's creative, you know? And that's the whole idea.
A lot of lots in town that have been approved that way over five feet, right? There's a lot.
Frank, Frank brought this up before, and the last time, we had to try to explain to him that, uh, there's a difference between the planning rules.
Yes.
For uplands and the Wetlands Protection Act, uh, rules for upland. And what he's trying to get at, right, and trying to get us to, uh, buy into is the idea that, um, those, uh, the two rules should be in simpatico. So that lot wouldn't even be buildable, so then they wouldn't have to, uh, go to hearings and listen to it all. It's, in, in a sense, it's kind of like, you know, a way of laziness, because they just, they don't even wanna see that come before them because they've got to do variances and they've gotta hire engineers to figure out where exactly they can put the house. And based on what I can see, it's gonna be prepped to be pretty close to the road, right? And either that number for the upland area, right, doesn't exist, that number's incorrect by, according to the conservation. Right? So, uh, there isn't enough upland there to actually build a house. So now the Conservation Commission has to deny it, right? So then they'll go to court, and the land court doesn't really care about conservation, they just care, the planning board said that was a buildable lot, right? So that's where.
Planning board doesn't make that determination.
No, they don't, you're right. But, you know, from these guys' perspective, that's what they're seeing, is like, you know, we've allowed somebody to create this lot, right, uh, to build a house. But under the Wellness Protection Act, they can't. So, you know, you can see where their, their dilemma would be, is like, why are we approving lots that can't be built on?
And, and we tried to address this? Our article died on the vine at town meetings, so we've done.
But that isn't what the law says.
Now we're bound by two years.
The law says it's a four A lot.
Right, yeah, no, I get that, I'm not arguing that.
Yeah, but it doesn't say you have to have conservation.
So his grievance, his grievance should be not to issue a building permit.
Wait, wait a minute, go through the process of going to the conservation, the conservation is gonna deny it.
Right.
Yeah.
That's the law, that's the way it's done.
Cause that's what their rules say, and they got to go by their rules. And to, and to expect that we have to follow the same set of rules as them is not, you know, uh, I mean, would it be better for everybody? Probably. It would be, actually be better for the person who makes the mistake of buying that lot only to find out that by the time he's done, he's gonna have to do all kinds of, um, you know. Yeah, well, he, he, he would be able to, but he's gonna have to do all kinds, he's gonna have to replicate wetlands in different spots.
Yeah, litigation.
It's, gets to the point where like, why have you done this to this poor person who bought this lot? Cause they have no idea, because no one in the closing is gonna say, uh, see those funny little squiggly lines in the back? They're gonna be a problem for you down the road.
So the point, the point being that it's, it's the, it's the writer of the letter's point that why, what, you know, or, or assumption or accusation, why are we kicking the can down the road? This point came up, exactly the same point came up with the recent application of a subdivision on County Road. It was the same letter, it was the same address, and it's the same point with another A and R that we had. Why are we kicking the can down the road? And the answer's the same, we're not kicking the can down the road, we have no team to be able to deny based off the rules and regulations, so it's the same. It's very much the same, you know, and what we try to do.
But when you buy, when you buy land or, or anything, and, and John knows, it's usually subject to getting a permit. So all they're gonna do is waste their time, but they're going in, and gotta go in, they gotta go through the process. Even if you have a regular lot that's got a hundred acres, you still have to go in and you still have to go in and eat everything.
Yeah, right, and you know, uh, John makes a good point, is like, you know, when, when the person purchases that lot, right? If they, if they have a good lawyer and a good title, and everybody is dealing with the process, is gonna be the first one to say to them is like, uh, you need to go have a conversation with the Conservation Commission to find out if that lot's even billable. And your P and S should say, if I can't, if I go back to conservation, they say I can't build anything, I want my money back. And they should be entitled to get it back. But, you know, this isn't our problem at all, really, this is the following of the regulations.
And another thing, the bank won't give them financing unless they got a permit, you know?
Yep.
So there's a lot of protective areas there.
Yep, so I don't, I don't really know if we need to, do we need to respond?
We could.
I don't think you need to do anything myself, I think it's a learning curve for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, it could be something.
I mean, I.
Dear Dr. Frank Skellinger, you're not as smart as you think you are.
We have addressed this.
I mean, I've had, I've had in-house conversations.
Tell Tony to do that.
I've had in-house conversations, I've had in-house conversations with him. You know, and I, and I explained to him, I said, you know, they're limited to what? You know, should we tighten up the zoning bylaw and maybe make it a little, uh, tighter? Sure, like I said, you know, if I look at that lot and go, yeah, true, that's, you have to get creative, but unfortunately.
Until twenty twenty-five.
But the idea, but the bottom line is, that's the whole idea of the, and I've said it before, is you tell an engineer, land surveyor, you can't do that, and we go challenge accepted. And that's what we have, our, our job is to try and get something that will meet the bylaw for your client.
Yeah.
Uh, and our job is to also look at the bylaws and say, okay, this is what we think it says, and then, you know.
So duly known, Mr. Skellinger, thank you for your letter, uh, we're on the same issues for the town plan, we'll reach out correspondence.
Uh, I have a.
Thanks for your input.
I have a, a second letter that just came in, uh, and this is from the United Cape Cranberry Inc., ADGA Realty LLC, three one three Plymouth Street, Halifax. Yeah, this letter was CC'd to us, it is actually addressed to Phil Clemens, chairman, uh, and members of the Board of Hanson Conservation Commission, but we were CC'd on it. Uh, subject, preservation of water rights and protection of local agriculture. Dear, dear chairman and members of the board, I trust this letter finds you in good health. I am writing to express my concerns regarding recent conversation put forth by the environmental activist group to drain the pond adjacent to our local farm, Indian Street Cranberry Bog Eight, United Cape Cod Cranberry Inc. As the proprietor of the farm and holder of water rights to this pond, I believe it is imperative to shed light on the potential ramifications this action could have on our agricultural operations, the town, and the local wildlife. Our farm and cranberry operation have, excuse me, have been dependent on the water from the mentioned pond for generations, playing a pivotal role in sustaining our crops. Any disruption to this water source would not only jeopardize our agricultural output, but could also lead to significant economic losses for our farm and the community at large. While we acknowledge the noble intentions of the environmental activist group, it is crucial to assess the holistic impact of draining the pond. The potential consequences on local agriculture, including ours, should be carefully considered. Additionally, the pond serves as a habitat for diverse wildlife, contributing to the biodiversity of our town. Its preservation aligns with the broader goals of environmental conservation, ensuring the well-being of both flora and fauna in our community. I propose that instead of draining the pond entirely, we collaborate on finding sustan- sustainable solutions that balance environmental concerns with the needs of local agriculture. This cooperative approach would not only safeguard the interests of our farm, but also contribute to a harmonious coexistence between conservation efforts and agricultural practices. I kindly request an opportunity to present our case at the upcoming committee meeting, where we can discuss the specific details and potential alternatives that may address concerns of the environmental activist group without compromising the vital water rights of our farm. Thank you for your time and consideration. I am hopeful that together we can find a balanced and mutual beneficial resolution that preserves both the environment and the livelihoods of local farmers. Sincerely, Emile Tea Junior, Civil and Environmental Engineer, Project Manager, United Cape Cod Cranberry Inc. and ADGA Realty LLC. So that was again, uh, directed to, uh, Mr. Clemens, but we did, we were CC'd on that.
Well, you understand, no, what's gonna happen is, there's a, um, the state is considering, along with, you know, where the, um, fireworks site is, right? There's a dam there, and there's a dam at LZ Thomas. Well, uh, they wanna open up the Indian Head Road.
LZ Thomas?
Uh, not so LZ Thomas, um, the Thomas Mill, I'm sorry.
Correct.
So, um, what they wanna do is take that dam out, take that one out, the one down at, uh, the fireworks site after they finish cleaning it up. And all of the dams all the way down out to the ocean, they wanna take them out. And if they take the dam out at, um, you know, the Thomas Mill, we all know what's gonna happen, it's gonna revert back to a river like it was from the beginning of time. That wasn't impounded until probably eighteen nineties, probably even later. I don't know the dates, so I'm not gonna throw a date out there, but, uh, that wasn't always impounded like that. And, uh, so, but the state wants to remove all, all of those obstacles because salmon, at one time, you could go to Wampe Tuck Pond and pull salmon out of the water certain times of the year. And don't restore all that.
We had the North River South River Rodishen Association, we had a representative, Kim, came to us.
Yeah.
To talk about the, it was the Ludham Ford Dam.
Yep.
And the other dam is.
Yeah, this is just recently.
I thought it was, I thought it was State Street.
Yeah.
It's not here.
Yeah, no, that one, that one's included in that, you have to look a little closer. That, that's only like in phase two. So what they wanna do is get rid of all those impolments, watch what happens, and then once, once the water settles where it's gonna go, which traditionally, that's what it always did, and now that, then they'll come and they'll take this dam down. And there's been discussions, and if you look closer inside of there, they're not, they're not completely convinced of taking that one down, but they're considering it, and that's what this letter is about. Cause that'll significantly change its ability to impound the water. But not really, mostly because, you know, uh, it comes out of Wampe Tuck Pond, right?
This pond, you have this pond here.
Yeah, yeah, but it, it actually kind of, it goes from McQuine to Indian Head, around, around, into Wampe Tuck and back out again. So there'd be no.
Your stump broken.
If you took that dam out, right, and that water drained down, right, it'd still have a source of water.
Still water there.
Yeah, it's still gonna come through there.
Just like it is on the other side of the.
Yeah, cause you know, Wampe Tuck legally, according to like conservation regulations, state regulations, is not a pond.
It's a river.
It's a riverine, it's a mill pond, which, you know, if you look up mill pond, it's just a riverine environment. So there's literally a river running through the middle of that pond.
No, there's no river.
Oh, there is.
It's a stream.
If, well, a stream, yeah. So whatever it may be, but you know, in certain years, it would extend all the way out, right? So it'd get pretty big, cause it's like a, like an oxo.
You know, a woman came from that water source, came here and started, and told us that they're gonna start with the forge, they're gonna start with the State Street and come up.
Work your way up?
Yeah, and, but they haven't said that they're gonna take the one at Forge. I mean, what's Forge, like the Drake Water one?
Yeah, Ludham Ford Pond.
But I went to the meetings and they're, they're doing it ass backwards. When you take a shower, you got dirt all over you, all right? And in this case, it's the same thing as to being polluted with lead and, uh, and other things that are in there from the, from the fireworks itself.
Yeah.
And it's on, on a cleanup. So if you're going to clean this up and get rid of the dams, wouldn't you start at the top?
Work your way down?
And work your way down?
To collect the continues.
But they're not, they're starting at Forge, they wanna start at Forge, clean that up, go up to the next one, which would be, the one on Rivers, um, Water Street needs some work, there's still stuff in there.
In Hanover?
In Hanover, and then the next one on Hanover, which is on part of State Street. And, and then eventually go to the dam, and then they'll eventually come here, cause she said that they were gonna take this one down.
Well, yeah, they, they brought that up, but you know, you, you know, you.
There's no need of it.
You know this and they know that, you know, and you've got guys with doctor in front of their name and a bunch of, uh, you know, uh, ASPCA at the end of their name, whatever it may be, right? And these people are supposed to know what they're talking about. That, that's not always true.
Right.
So, you know, the reality is, is they, they have public comment periods, so, you know, it's not like they're gonna come and, you know, you're gonna drive by and go, what the hell, we're taking the dam down, you know? Uh, there'll have to be all kinds of hearings, the conservation hearings, all kinds of stuff before any of that ever happens. So this guy's just trying to get ahead of the curve on it.
So now he's the, he's the cranberry governor that's.
Behind it, so.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, though, they have, um, they have water rights, right? And I looked this up because it was old Thomas Mills Pond that went on back in the past. So, uh, water rights isn't ownership of the water, it's the right to extract so many gallons per year from it, or whatever the original agreement was. But it doesn't give them the right to say, you can't take the dam down, because we have rights. Like, you know, you have your rights, even if you take the dam down, you still have your rights, does that make sense?
Yeah.
But anyway, this is way off topic, so.
No, that makes sense, that makes total sense.
Yeah, it's getting late too, it's almost nine o'clock. I have a job to go to too, so.
Motion to, uh.
So I'll keep, I'll keep the rest of it, I'll keep the rest of it short, some of this stuff we can just kinda get through quick. So the fiscal budget for twenty twenty-five for the planning department is gonna total out at one hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars. Uh, we were asked to level fund, there was a couple of line items that I was, I reduced by a couple of dollars. Um, and.
The salaries are fixed, right?
Correct, and so, um, and when I say a couple of dollars, like, you know, advertising, uh, by fifty dollars. And there was one other one, I reduced by like fifty, I think it was, uh, membership dues, yeah, membership dues. Uh, it was set at a thousand and it just was, uh, way too, way too high. So that's, that's their operating budget for twenty twenty-five, which has been submitted for review and, uh, we'll see what the FinCom says about that.
Hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty-four.
Correct.
Just the review administrative assistant possible office hours increase is gonna.
Yeah, that's gonna change, will that change the budget?
That would change the budget, so.
How many hours you working out?
Nineteen point five.
And you wanna go to?
Twenty-two.
At least twenty-two, yeah.
Uh, nineteen point five, you're getting full benefits? So if you change to twenty.
Twenty-two.
Is that still under, or you need what, thirty hours?
You need twenty, is it twenty, it was twenty.
I think it's twenty-five. Um.
Where'd you get the?
In order to get the, um, pension, it's over nineteen point five.
Yeah, I think it was twenty.
It's like twenty.
So, so if your hours changed to twenty, you're gonna get, you're gonna get the pension, right? You have to pay in the, and then anything over twenty-five, would you be applicable to benefits?
Correct.
You had it written up, right?
What's your question?
Did you little write up?
I did my little write-up.
So, uh, I had Kim just do a little write-up, and I'll have her email it to the board, and you can discuss it the next year.
It's actually in, it's in your package.
So, okay.
Read it to us?
No, I fall asleep.
Uh, is this the planning board economic, uh, uh, no, that's.
Yeah, that, that's.
Yeah. These are the added tasks?
These are, um, at the beginning, it's the, the day-to-day tasks, um, and then the procedures that are needed to be completed.
Since you, since you started, which was in.
May.
May of twenty-two.
May first.
Twenty-three.
Three.
This year.
About twenty-three, sorry, May of twenty-three, I'm way off in my calendar. So since you started in May of twenty-three, under the job description that was presented in May of twenty-three, when'd you change?
It's, um, I, I, I think what happened though, it's not that it necessarily changed, it's just that, um, there was an article that was brought up back in twenty eighteen to try to um, have the, um, position back to full-time because of all the details that are required for the position. But the budget wasn't there, so it wasn't approved, so, um, if you look, if you take the moment to, really, on the third page, in the fourth page, it gives you the job description, more specific of what the job description, daily tasks and come up, but it's.
If I could add just to share?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, uh, with Kim going to twenty-two hours, what's, what's happening basically is with the addition of the Economic Development Committee is, has a robust agenda.
Yep.
And with, which is gonna add, we, we're talking about, you know, the PSA.
Yep.
Uh, reaching out to businesses, so the assistance there with the EDC, and also, uh, just the fact of the additional, we have a total of five grants that we're, I'm running right now, uh, and obviously going after more. So the, you know, having Kim in the office for at least two and a half more hours would be beneficial to myself. To be able to assist with, you know, uh, some of the day-to-day operations and tasks that I can give her to do. Uh, you know, we're not looking to do the full-time, well, thirty-five hour thing, we're hoping that we can at least get a two and a half hour, uh, increase to twenty-two. Um, that would be a. Um, that would be a beneficial, be a benefit to this department, also the Economic Development Committee, and would hopefully be a minimum impact, uh, as far as costs to the town.
So, do you mind if I speak about this a little bit? So I have some thoughts, and I know, uh, back at one time, you know, the position for planner conservation was bifurcated, you know, slashed in half, you know, one of each one, and it never really worked out really well. But the thing that, um, I think people are missing and don't understand is that, um, your position has expanded in scope beyond just the planning board, right? You know, the Economic Development Committee is an entity unto itself, uh, requiring your, your, your resources as well as your assistance.
Yes.
So, uh, that wasn't planned for in the original, um, discussions that went forward. So just by virtue of the, uh, the desire for them to have you do all this extra stuff with your new position, right, uh, that creates more work for your assistant as well.
Yes.
And I don't think that was, um, thought about at the time.
It was discussed, but it was, it was discussed, but it was.
Yeah, well, we'll see what the impact is, so we're at that point now.
Yeah.
We're seeing what the impact is.
There is definite impact, and I know, you know, everybody's first, first thing blushes to say, wow, you know, we're, difficult economic times, we can't afford it, you can't afford not to.
Can't afford not to, right.
Yeah, and, you know, we can make that argument easily because we sit here and we see it all the time.
Pennywise and pound foolish.
Yeah, but, um, you know, the broader world doesn't really understand that by expanding Tony's scope, you're also expanding his administrative system. And to be honest with you, you know, you should be at forty or thirty-five hours like, like everybody else.
Are you applicable to doing thirty-five hours?
I mean, if it was, uh, if it was possible, sure, but I'm just grateful for anything additional because it does help out in the long run.
But there's a fine line, out of respect for your, for your livelihood, the hours that you're putting in, and, and, and what you're doing. There's a fine line between, I'm just going to put in a little couple of extra hours, as opposed to, no, I'm putting in more than just a couple of extra hours, and there are other people, out of fairness, there are other people here that are putting in the same amount of hours, they're getting full-time benefits, you know, so, so. Pennywise and pound foolish, we, we, I don't have any problem fighting for the right hours, the right benefits package, and the right respect out of our department, and have somebody argue with me that we don't deserve it. We absolutely, we know the proofs of the pudding to be able to, to, to put that point forward. Pennywise and pound foolish, we just went through the sex size with the planning position. Why are you going to, you know, stifle that to have the person say, well, fine, forget it, I'm, this is, not only, not only employee, you know, okay, this is the small, I'm going to ask now through my collective bargaining agreement, I'm going to ask now to whittle this down to what can be put into nineteen hours. That's another point I want to try to make, was is there, is there any concern that we need to look at this with the collective board, that would be, obviously personnel board to be able to look at that.
So couldn't, couldn't we?
If the meat's on the potatoes for us to be able to get a full-time planner, which we have, and a full-time planning administrative assistant, I don't have any problem fighting that fight.
Right.
But we deservedly think, we know it's deserving.
So that leads me to my question, is, um, should we ask the chairman and, um, and someone else from planning to go before the wage and personnel board?
God.
Because, you know, if you, if you look at this description, right, uh, anybody with any sense who's ever managed people would take one look at this thing and go, you can do all of this in forty hours, and you say, no, I'm only doing it in twenty-one.
Yeah.
You know, you're making a pretty good argument.
What does the town budget look like before we start? Well, it depends on who you have to draw the saber.
It almost doesn't, it almost doesn't matter because it's like here or there, you know? It's like, who, you know, who's going to make the best argument for their, for their, for the resources?
Well, we, if I may, Mr. Chair, I mean, you know, the, Kim's predecessor, we had attempted to go for thirty-five hours at the time, and it just was not even a matter of discussion. You know, so that's why we're looking.
And where did that person go?
And that's why, at least for this point, we're, we're thinking, okay, well, if we can't shoot for the stars, can we shoot for at least down the block, maybe twenty-two hours, and see if that would be amenable, where it's, I'm going to use the term short money, but obviously people might not think it's short money. So we, we figured maybe something of a compromise of maybe twenty-two hours, you know, and see if that works, and then if we can get something later on down the line. So it's up, I, I mean, so we're looking for support from the board, if the board feels that it wishes to support that, of at least chasing down at a minimum twenty-two hours. I mean, if you want to go above the, and to thirty-five and shoot for the stars, I mean, it's up.
In my personal opinion, my personal.
Yes, risky, yes.
My personal.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel like if we go for thirty-five, they're going to just immediately say no way.
Well, my, my personal opinion is to be able to find out what, what affords, what affords Kim full benefits. So to be honest, because there should be no difference, you know, you get a part-time mechanic down at the highway department that's coming in and working on some, uh, machinery, and, and then her head, you know, that, that's truly a part-time job. Kim's here, it's not eleven-thirty, and she goes, I'm sorry, Tony, I'm going to go. She's still here, I've seen her here, I know you come in, I know you come in before hours, after hours, I've seen it myself. So knowing the dedication that we have, and knowing what, what would be required of it, there should be no reason why we shouldn't be going forward for a benefited position, whatever those hours are, even the minimum for that benefited position. But I think that the office should absolutely, uh, and, and if I'm not mistaken, we go back to that article where we asked for the thirty-five, uh, there were no other administrative assistant positions in this building that were not benefited. Am I correct? Is that still the standard?
Yeah, as far as I know, they're all benefited.
They're.
The only position that did not carry benefits was the planning office.
Yeah, and I think there is one other person that works under twenty, uh, yes.
Yeah, downstairs, yeah, downstairs, I think, the treasurer collective's office.
Yeah, someone, there's one other person, I believe, within the building.
But it's less hours than you though, correct?
Same, I think, same hours, I think.
So that, that's new since that article went forward, though, right? That's a new.
I mean, one possible argument too is that department has a total of, let's say, four people in it. As to.
Two, two people with the load, you know, the, the, the facets that you have for communication coming into your office because of the different things that have been brought on by the new job description far outweigh what, what's coming into that office. That's all, I would say, is probably the same, I don't want to say mundane, not mundane, but it's all the same. It's the same trick, it's always the day-to-day, the tax of the day-to-day. Uh, can you find out what the, what the minimum benefited hours would be?
Yeah, definitely.
So have you been, uh, called into the principal's office with the finance committee yet? You know, they usually want to go through your budget and, you know?
No.
That's a good place to start.
Right.
Wage and personnel is really, uh, the landing pad, you know, because without talking to them, right, uh, they won't approve that without some, something, right?
Does the board want to try to reach out to the chairman of wage and personnel?
No. So it's a good place to start anyway, because, you know, they're the ones that make that.
We'll be a former planning board. And then, and then we should also reach out to the, uh, finance committee too, because we're going to have to make that argument there.
Yeah, on, on December first, I had had, well, prior to December first, I had everything that was required. The budget was in, there was a narrative that needed to be submitted, so everything was, was, was submitted on time. And, you know, we've been able to, I think, level fund basically, other than salaries, which is always, you know, steady with you for the last two years.
But the change in, the change in wage for nineteen hours to, say it's a twenty-five hour benefit position, uh, you know, I agree, I understand that there's now, you know, the acquisition of benefits for the member, but, you know, what are you talking about, point zero four percent of the total budget? You know what I mean? That's, that's pennywise, pound foolish, you know? Yeah, you, you have our support.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely, one hundred percent.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I'm just wondering if there's anything through the collective bargaining contract that there would be any concern, you know, whenever that would be.
Well, we'd have to run it through that, through the union anyway to find out.
Yeah, are you afforded OT? Time and a half pay?
There's no, it's not the budget, it's not happening, right?
I have to use comp time, if, so like for tonight.
Are you going to union?
Yes, yes, but there's no overtime within our. Pardon me?
You accrue comp time?
Correct.
So is that mentioned in here that you, you have to attend the meetings at night?
Yes.
It's a night, so now, so you must have, you must have loads of comp time.
No, you have to take it.
Within the month or the?
Which is a detriment to the operations of the planning department.
So for instance, so for instance, let's say, so let's say we're wrapped up at nine-thirty, so that's three hours. So on, let's say Thursday, if Kim said, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to take, use that, so she comes in for?
One hour.
One hour.
What's the?
Or she could split it up, you know?
Right, I mean, I could split it up.
She's on the same day, she could split it up.
Or you get your full-time hours and this evening's incorporated in your schedule. Right? It doesn't make any sense, and that tone.
That's for the rest of the full time.
Thank you, doesn't make any sense.
They have Tuesday night, and then they have Friday, most of Friday off, or all of Friday off.
Let, let's go to the two departments and then figure out, once you get the information there, let's figure out how to move forward with that. Because it's going to have to be a D W E match at Tom meeting.
We were, we were looking.
We've had all these arguments before, I'm sorry.
Well, we were, we were just looking to throw it out there to the board and see if the board has support for it.
I think that's loud and clear.
I think, I think you made a, I think you've made a good case with this document, because, like I said, I look at it and I think, this looks like, like forty hours worth of work, and you're doing it in half that time, so they're getting a benefit bargain already, and.
No, I'm not, I don't know already.
So, uh, MMA conference, Mr. Kemet has been signed up, uh, and now we.
Martial arts conference, nice.
Yeah, and then we have two invoices here.
What's your cage name?
Could you please pass those?
Those days are over, leave though.
And while you're doing that, Mr. Chair, we'll just, uh, just for a review, a quick review of the goals that the planning board had set uh, at the beginning of twenty twenty-three. Was create additional affordable housing, so, sort of working on it. Revisit and close out existing outstanding subdivision projects, which I have been in touch with various developers, and I think if, in twenty twenty-four, if these developers, uh, are not going to be responding, that we may look, if the board approves so, to start going after the bond money.
Okay.
The downfall is it seems that the bond money winds up in the general fund, so. So determine exactly what the planning board and administering stormwater regulations. Uh, one thing to just touch on that, uh, the highway superintendent has reached out to me regarding MS four, and because of the MS four updates, our bylaws have to sort of match the updates. Uh, so he is looking, he's looking into, uh, getting a proposal from a consultant who's been doing the MS four and about creating those bylaws, or depending on the cost and what is involved, doing it in-house through our office. Uh, review earth removal regulations and clarify procedures, so we just sort of looked at that. Examine planning board role in becoming special permit granting authority in site plan approval in line with surrounding communities. Um, McQuan Street tip, still in the works regarding getting the monies from the Commonwealth, where they've had approved, a hundred thousand dollars, I heard scuttlebutt, that items like that may be recalled. Don't know how that works, but, uh.
So what's going to get recalled?
So basically, all the, all the, all the money that sort of went out there for, I'm going to use the term earmarks, let's say.
Yeah.
Because of a certain crisis that's taking place, the state is seeing that they're bleeding money to cover that crisis, and that they're trying to see of any ways of sort of grabbing any money that they can to help cover that crisis.
Must be a second language crisis?
Uh, meet with water department for a status of existing town water supply. I think that's, uh, one, I'm not sure that we've touched on. So what I'll do is in January, we'll try and create a twenty twenty-four goals and, uh.
So can I just mention, going back to that document, right, that you just showed us, about, um, you know, future things that you need to do, right? If you look at, um, you know, the fact that you're going to have to do all kinds of work for the highway departments, uh, needs to have things done for them, right? Uh, that's another, that should be included in.
Kim's description.
Kim's, Kim's description of the things that she needs to do, because she's going to be intimately involved with that process, right? So there's another reason to increase our hours, because if we're going to be assisting the highway department in, uh, stormwater management, and you guys should be getting the credit that you deserve for that assistance financially and.
As in several funds? No, it's the same as what we're.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Because he works directly for us.
Yeah, correct.
Because we made the determination of where he's going.
That's correct, it was reinforcing all that.
Yep.
So in twenty twenty-four, we'll create some, uh, yeah, we'll go back and tackle twenty twenty-four, uh, and set some goals for that.
Invoice for twenty-one thousand twenty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents, this is in regards to site plan review. Any questions in regards to that invoice?
I believe that, that amount, uh, Mr. Chair, is for the grant for the pedestrian improvements. Um, what I was in the realization at the time is that the state does reimburse the town. And then we pay for Dantus. Uh, there was a little, I'll say, a miscommunication between our, my department and me and treasurer. It's all worked out, it's all squared away.
Twenty-one thousand is going to go off to?
And that's going to go up, the twenty-one thousand goes to Verdantis. So we, what happens is Verdantis gives us an invoice, I send it off to the state for reimbursement, they send us the money, we send it to Verdantis.
Doesn't say, you all got it on you?
It just seems to be easier, it just seems to be easier if the state would just send it to Verdantis. But that's the way it works.
Taken custody.
Yeah, and so.
Another invoice for one hundred seventy-nine dollars for W B Mason.
We were able, we were able to get, uh, Kim a nice chair on sale. Her chair kept collapsing.
That's always funny. You didn't agree at all? Should just come down here, take one of these chairs.
And that is all I have this evening, uh, and I'd just like to say I wish all the members of the board and Kim a happy holiday, hope it's.
Same to you.
A happy, safe holiday, and I look forward to twenty twenty-four and tackling.
Any board members have anything for good of the order?
No.
Motion to. Ah, no, wait. The chair would entertain a motion to establish the next planning board meeting to be Monday, January eighth, twenty twenty-four. So the motions will be made by Mr. Ellis. Secondly, Mr. Benignato, any questions in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to.
Harry's five zero, there's a motion to adjourn by Mr. Kemet.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, any discussions in regards to that motion? And then he gives his other hand, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at nine eighteen.